Welcome.
Matt, how do you deal with heckling? I haven't, I haven't, I haven't been in a meeting with you yet. Are you, are you game for a little?
Uh, I think so. There was, I think my first meeting.
We'll keep it serious.
There was some conversation in the audience that started to become intrusive to the conversation of the board.
Okay. You were quite direct about that.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, it took place.
It was good. Fair of it.
That's what the gavels for.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right, thank you. Well, moving on to review of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, no, continue, please.
No, I won't test you, I promise. I'll start.
I only found two things. Um, on the second page of the minutes, the very top line, it says, "Blackie explains that a six-foot..." Oh, wait, it is correct, off-white, never mind. I take it back. And then, "Blackie" was misspelled on page three of the minutes.
It was on two also.
Okay.
The paragraph that starts McCann asks how snow storage...
Oh, oh yeah, Blackie.
On the third page, it was the fourth paragraph down. Fourth line from the bottom of that paragraph. That's kind of confusing when you say that, but...
I make a motion to accept the minutes of April 17th.
Second.
All right, if there's no other discussion with the corrections suggested, we'll move to, vote to accept the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
I abstain.
All right, thank you very much. The minutes pass. Were there any comments from the public not involving the, uh, what's on the agenda tonight? Perfect, thank you. Joseph, any communications received?
Yeah, we do have a couple of communications. Um, the, the first one was included in the packet, and that was a communication from the town of Sandburne, which was related to a balloon float test. And a notice was given to the town of Plymouth under the cell tower statute, where they will float a balloon up, or in fact, at this point, they already have done this, but before, it was before this meeting, but after the packet went out. We only got the, the notice from them last week, unfortunately. But if anybody had wanted to, they could have gone and seen the balloon float up to, to view a visual representation of the height of the tower. They also sent us the plans. It was a, it was a detailed submittal. Really no action of this planning board needs to take on that, but it is there if anyone had a need.
We, we did that behind O'Reilly's.
Oh, that makes sense.
For a proposed tower.
Yeah, on the hill there.
I don't know if they put it in or not.
It's there.
It is there.
So, yep.
Is that because that was a development of regional impact that we got that notice?
Cell towers actually have a special statute that is similar to development of regional impact, but has its own specific language, but it's, it's development of regional impact adjacent, but just a specific component for, for cell towers.
Because we're kind of far away from Sandburne.
We are, and we get the, the cell tower ones are, are, as I understand, a little bit more broad with the notices than necessarily, development of regional impact's really more about the Regional Planning Commission and the directly adjacent impacted community, but, but these tend to go a little more broadly. Again, I, I would be surprised if this had a visual impact anywhere in Plymouth, but it, it was an opportunity if anybody had been interested in, in seeing if there was any visual impact. And then, another communication that we did receive recently, which I can make the board aware of, is that, as the board is aware, the, the town and the planning board and the housing committee worked on the HOP grant last year, last couple of years, and we're currently working on HOP 2.0. There is an opportunity that we've been made aware of for previous HOP grant recipients to have a opportunity to participate in the Planned New Hampshire Community Design Charrette Program with the program fee waived for those communities that participated in the HOP grant, as long as they can tie the charrette in some way to housing. Um, and Planned New Hampshire Community Design Charrette Program, for those who may not be familiar, it's a really great volunteer-run community planning effort. Planned New Hampshire is a, is a nonprofit that pulls together a few times a year to have these really focused teams come into a community, usually around a village center. They, they do a little more broad work, but usually it's around a village center. They pull in architects, engineers, planners, sometimes historic preservation professionals, and they will help the community hold a series of focused public engagement sessions that relate to a specific area of the town and potential design opportunities for that area. So after holding community and stakeholder meetings on a Friday, they will basically spend a Saturday working on some visuals to create a report of possible recommended improvements for an area, and they often include pretty detailed architectural sketches, engineering recommendations, design recommendations. And typically, it's a $6,500 program fee, but it is waived for six HOP grantees over the next three years. However, the, the sort of catch here is that they've asked towns to apply this month. They've only given us one month to fill those six spots over the next three years. So if this is something that the board and the town is interested in, and the board would support moving forward with this, if we put in an application this month, basically, we, we could expect that they would actually schedule something with us as, as many as three years out from now. The area that, um, you know, I think has often been identified, and, and this is by no means a, the only area it could work, but the, the area that is often identified as being a real place that some design, infrastructure design ideas and visualizations would be helpful is the Railroad Square area behind Main Street. You know, it, that's, that's an area where potentially the town and the community could benefit from seeing some architects' renderings of what different infrastructure possibilities down there could look like. They sometimes look at land uses, they look at other elements too. But that's, you know, that, that seems like if we were going to just pick a recommended area, that, that would be one, though certainly if, if other folks have other areas in the community that they think it might work. Though Planned New Hampshire really does focus on village centers traditionally, that's kind of their bread and butter. But I'd love to turn that over to the planning board too, to see if the board would be interested in, in moving forward with something like that over the next few years at some point. Because it would be a reduced cost opportunity.
Do we need to pick an area in order to apply?
Unfortunately, they want to know where you want to do it and have a, basically a soft commitment from the town wi- with the application by the end of May.
Okay, so we do need to pick an area?
It's, it's part of being qualified is to actually have a workable plan of...
Make sure they're looking at an area that makes sense.
And part of the reason that HOP grantees get a, get a free use of this program is if they can tie the, the area in some way to housing in their community. And I think that's another reason that, you know, Railroad Square has seen some housing development, but the infrastructure has not necessarily caught up with the housing development that's happened there. You know, there, there are, there were, the planning board in 2018 approved eighteen units of housing down on Railroad Square, twelve of which have been constructed, one of which is, is not yet constructed. Um, and then there is another small two-family unit. So there actually is some housing down there, but the infrastructure down there is, is very complicated. You know, the ownership of the road, the ownership of the land, drainage systems, the way that that area connects to the downtown. So, so those are some of the, some of the reasons that that area might make sense and might be a strong candidate for this program, but again, there, it, it's not the only area that could work either. There, there could be others, if there were other areas that members felt would be a better fit.
And it's not inclusive for housing, it just needs to include a housing component. So it can be commerce, housing, and then, you know, everything encompassed.
Yeah, and Planned New Hampshire Charrette reports typically include recommendations on a whole host of things. And I, I, unfortunately, since this has come up very recently, and they haven't given us a lot of time with this, unfortunately, I would have included a link, and, you know, there is still time if the planning board wanted to think about this. I can share their website where there are links to all the reports they've completed. They have done eighty-two of these since 1996 all across the state. And these reports have some really, uh, there's a pretty wide range. Some are focused on a specific park in a community, some are focused on streets throughout an entire area of a community. But really, they do have kind of like a village orientation. But again, they, they don't have to necessarily, so it, it's a, it's an interesting opportunity. The board doesn't, doesn't need to decide tonight necessarily, but ideally, if we are gonna go forward with it, we'd probably want to know by, you know, the end of May. And it's something that I think we would want to take to the select board as well, uh, because we'd, we'd want to... The, the Planned New Hampshire doesn't want to partner with a community that doesn't have, you know, where the planning board and select board don't actually want to see the effort go forward. So it's really important that, for something they look for, that, that the town actually would have community leaders like the planning board and select board who are involved in the, the effort.
If I may?
Please, yeah.
I thi- I think one thing that's important just to reiterate or iterate or whatever, um, is, I mean, as far as charrettes go, you can have like architectural charrettes, which in some ways is kind of more obviously tied to housing, um, but is really is, I think, supposed to be a design, like a herb, like a planning charrette. Given this Plan New Hampshire. So to design a whole space that would include housing. And that area, I mean, whatever we call Railroad Square, which I know you, you ask ten people, you get ten different answers. But the area roughly from Yamas through the skate park has been talked about ad nauseam for its like non-road that people drive on, that we have housing built on at this point, even though it's not really quite a road. And we don't understand ownership there. And one of the nice things about this process, even though it's like two days, which is kind of crazy, is it does have a lot of public engagement. So people are part of the process and part of the decision-making. And at the end of that, you get some really nice sketches and mockups of what the space could look like. A lot of us, we hear about like planning ideas, like, "Oh, we could do this or that," and you're like, you can't visualize, you're like, "What does that even mean?" And here you have the opportunity, after just a couple of days, to actually have a rendering of like, "It could mean this, it could mean this." And if you have a hard time visualizing it, this is what it looks like. And that can be inspiring to people when you need a little bit of extra push to get started on something, to say like, "Imagine if it looked like this," instead of this kind of like no man's land back alley there that you don't know, know quite what to do with. Um, especially if you watched the recent select board meeting, they're, they're redoing the skate park, and you've probably saw the paving there already maybe, um, with some other amenities there as well. And to have connectivity between that and the, and the kind of amphitheater waterfront, and the housing that's already there, potentially more housing, who knows? It seems like a great opportunity.
I think it's, I like the, you know, just initially talking about it, I like the idea of it. What's everyone else thinking?
Can we go back just a, one step and make sure we define charrette?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good point. Yeah, a charrette is basically a condensed community planning effort that is focused on coming up with potential solutions to a particular challenge, usually a physical space-related challenge. So it could be a vacant lot, and you gather stakeholders, you gather members of the community. You might do, similar to the community meetings we did with the HOP grant, where we had, you know, tables with, with maps, or perhaps you have discussion groups or other kind of community engagement ideas. And then you also have, um, you know, perhaps property owners, business owners, other sort of interested stakeholders come in and really discuss some of these challenges related to, say, it's a, it's a piece of property. What might work, what might not, what do people in the community want to see, what do they not want to see? Um, and then you really try to hone in on, here are some recommendations that we can visualize, whether it's a sketch of some infrastructure improvements, or it's a rendering of a building that you want to see on a particular site. But it's really a condensed, focused, public engagement opportunity. And they can take a few different forms, but that's, that's really the core, is gathering a group of community members and stakeholders to engage intensively on a challenge, on solving, or coming up with some ideas to solve a challenge that's in some way related to physical space.
And we'd have half a dozen, like, professional planners, landscape architects, designers, engineers, whoever was appropriate, working basically as volunteers for the community. Getting like professional work done for like no charge.
It's pretty special. It is.
Does that answer your question for the...
I know, I, I know what it is, I was just making sure everyone in the room and outside the room knows as well. But, uh, yes, I think it's a fantastic opportunity, and it would be, especially because, as John was saying, being able to visualize, uh, possibilities is very challenging, and it's one of the things that designers are trained to help people do. And so, to be able to in, get that and have new possibilities presented to us, I think is exciting.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Make a motion, or are we just consensually agreeing, or...
Well, do we want to identify an area that, you know, we've all talked about Railroad Square here the past few days? Do we want to identify an area to suggest to the select board that, you know, we think would be appropriate and bounce off them as well to move forward, or what do you think, Molly?
I, I mean, I think Railroad Square is as good a place as any, I mean, I've heard people talk about Green Street as well for a long time. Is that what, that is Green Street, right?
Yeah, we, we, we did, we did a charrette on Green Street and Railroad Square.
Right.
And it involved having a traffic circle down beyond the skate park.
Oh, wow.
On a Route 3, but it didn't, it didn't make it through town meeting.
Oh.
But, so there's a whole plan there.
Yeah.
That you could work from.
Yeah.
Well, like you said, it's been talked about for a long time. And it's, I think there's so many layers to peel back there.
Yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity too, because we do have, we've, we've looked at it, and looked at it, and looked at it. It'd just be nice to have somebody come in that hasn't looked at it to give a much different perspective on it.
The timing...
It'll be the same.
The timing is interesting too with the master plan, potentially.
And give it some new excitement.
So yeah, in terms of location, I don't have any better idea than Railroad Square. I think it's in need of visualizing.
Especially, I would say, I would just add one, one more thing.
Please.
Since the last charrette was done down there, the last design that was done, um, a lot has actually changed, and we're seeing more and more development in that area. Grotto went in, uh, which is a very different use than it was before. Housing went in, and a, a lot of things are changing pretty quick down there. And it would be good to get ahead of that rather than being behind the ball in that. We're already behind the ball in that, but not gonna get further behind the ball in that.
At one time, Railroad Square, all the way down to Route 3, was heavily developed for commercial and industrial use. Of course, you know, flooding.
Yes, that's a factor.
Yeah, but you're right, there were a lot of, you know, go back to nineteen eighteen, there were several grist mills in the area, railroad warehouses, there was the turntable. I mean, it was, it was, it was quite an industrial area at one time, there's, there's no doubt about it. And some of the remnants are still there. You can still sort of see the outline of the turntable in front, the, the train turntable in front of the water and sewer district building.
Is that where that was?
A big engine house.
Wow.
Yeah. There were a lot of sidetracks.
Definitely, especially in the skate park area, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the idea of it. Seems like we have a good census for it.
Yeah.
Would anyone be interested in making a motion to put this, do we agree to it? Do we need to vote on this, Joseph?
So they do ask for a letter of support from the planning board, so I think if the planning board did want to vote. Now, if the planning board wanted to vote at a future meeting, that, that would be fine too if the planning board isn't ready. But if the board does want to vote to, to recommend it, uh, we can sort of move forward with that and then take that to the select board as well.
Well, I make a motion, we move forward with the Planned New Hampshire Charrette application for the Railroad Square area.
I was about to propose an alternate.
Can you, can you hold your mo- your motion for a second?
Sure. Um, the only other, so recognizing that, you know, Neil mentioned that there's been a charrette and some work done in that area, there's somewhat, you know, marginal value in, in doing another one. Whereas, um, we're all pretty familiar with the, a lot of thought that went into the area of West Plymouth, around the Mahew Turnpike. And, and that's another area that I think could be a potential, um, you know, we, we started talking about it with the, the Tenny Mountain Overlay District, but a charrette in that area could be a good basis for a better evaluation of development in that part of town. I think if you look at, um, I think even the master plan identifies that as a, as a area of potential future development. And I think that could be another area to consider looking at, especially since we, we haven't really done a charrette in that area, and there's been one in the, the Railroad Square area.
If I may?
Please.
You're not wrong. Um, I, I totally agree, it would be a good idea to have a better plan for out there. Um, and there's a lot of potential for that. Um, I will also say Planned New Hampshire tends to work in more already the valid areas.
Okay.
And the tie-in downtown Railroad Square to housing is a little bit more direct, whereas the, in that area, there's a little bit more of wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I would just say, I'm not saying one is a better idea than the other, but in terms of probability, which I don't really know, it'll work for them, but my, my hunch would be you have a better chance of getting the Railroad Square one approved. But I could be wrong about that, I don't know.
It could be a scale phenomenon, because that is a very large area to try to do a charrette on as opposed to Railroad Square is, in the timeline of doing the charrette, a little more realistic, is my only thought.
Okay, that's fine, I, I wanted to discuss it. I mean, I, I'm okay with the board moving forward as, as the discussion has been going, but I wanted to throw that out there and make sure we were considering it as an option.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I like the idea. It's a, it's a change from something we've done. Joseph, is there, is there a difference in probability of, uh, application acceptance? If it is something like, you know, Railroad Square versus Tenny Mountain, which we're all assuming that we will see the development, it's just not, doesn't have the density and concentration and completely different from downtown Square.
Yeah, let me read through real quick, and I, I think that what, they don't explicitly say that it has to be in one type of area over another, but sometimes the application criteria can lead you down a certain path. So the cri- the questions that they want you to ask, "How would you describe the proposed project area for which your group is asking Planned New Hampshire to provide assistance?" That one's pretty, uh, cut and dry. "How will the proposed project enhance the health and vitality of your community? What challenges are occurring within your community that are having an impact on how you think about your future? What vision does your community have for your social, economic, environmental, and governance sectors? And what influence does the project area have on other parts of the community? And how do other parts of the community affect this target area?" So, those are, I, I suppose, relatively broad criteria, um, could be probably approached in a lot of different ways. I mean, like you said, John, the, the Planned New Hampshire is most known for their work in village centers. They've worked in Ashland, Bristol, um, you know, a lot of these like traditional New England villages, but, but that's not a criteria that it has to be. It, it's just sort of their focus area. And I, we don't know how many applications they're going to get either. They could only get six applications and, and take everybody, you know, regardless. We just don't know at this point what the demand for the program is going to be for those, those six spots. And indeed, even if we applied, there's, there's not a guarantee if, if there's a lot of interest, because this does waive the $6,500, uh, fee. So if a lot of communities do end up applying, there, there's not even a guarantee we'd get a spot. It would be a potential, but not, not a sure thing.
If we do go for the Railroad Square area, it'd be nice to think about trail connectivity as well.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
Made it.
I'd like to add that, uh, I, I, I think we need to consider the possibility that rail service may increase in the future.
Really? Please.
Yeah. Well, I, I have heard that the, uh, Scenic Railroad is, is considering a summertime, once-a-week tourist train from Laconia to Plymouth. I don't know.
Wow.
I, I don't know when this is supposed to happen, but I, but I have heard this, uh, as a, as a possibility that's been thrown around with the senior center being the sort of endpoint. So even if it's more of a limited service, it could, it could certainly be a possibility. Yeah, and if that's successful, who knows?
It would be nice to dump off into a nice area. Maybe we, then maybe I wouldn't call it dump off.
Disembark.
Ah, yeah.
Lots were laid out. That's all original. Seventeen sixty...
Well, do we want to pick a spot tonight?
Well, I, I interrupted John who made a motion.
I didn't make, I didn't make a motion.
His motion is still on the table, if somebody wants to second it. Since I interrupted you, I'll second, second your motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion before we move into a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? All right, perfect, motion passes. Thank you.
So Joseph, were, will you draft language addressing those questions, or...
Yeah, I, I certainly can and would plan to if a planning, if the planning board did want to designate someone to, uh, work on that with me, that, that's certainly fine. The board's done that in the past with grants too. It's really up to the board, if, if the board wants to, to designate someone as a, as a sort of co, co-author. Or the, indeed, the board could...
Are there any volunteers?
I'm interested.
There we go.
There we go.
I think Molly would be a great one to do it with.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
All right.
And I'm happy to get any input, if anyone has opinions on those questions, of course.
Great, and then we'll plan on, uh, getting in touch with, uh, Scott and, uh, the select board about getting on the agenda hopefully and discussing with the select board as well in the coming month.
Any other communications on your end, Joseph?
Uh, no, no other communications that I have at this point.
Would now be an appropriate time for me to mention the, um, the personnel policy update regarding social media usage for the board?
That's a, that's a good idea, yes. Yep, that, that's, thank you for bringing that up, because I had actually forgotten about that.
That hasn't been sent out to the board yet, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Oh, it hasn't? Okay.
So on April twenty-ninth, we received a memorandum from the town for all employees, boards, commissions, and town volunteers regarding personnel policy update regarding social media usage. I am not an expert in this topic, so you will receive an email from Joseph discussing, um, the expectations. And we do have a select board member here. Phil, did you want to speak on this at all?
So I can tell you that the, the draft that we had came from Primex, um, which is our, our insurance carrier. They advise on a lot of, uh, they advise many towns on issues of liability, and that we did, uh, make some amendments to their draft language to make it a little bit more clear. And, and I think what is, I think what's going out is somewhat clear and, and pretty easy to stay. It keeps the town out of trouble.
Yep, it's five paragraphs altogether, and it's pretty straightforward stuff. There's nothing that, um, I shouldn't say there's nothing, but reading through it, there's most likely nothing that's gonna surprise you.
Right.
Pretty standard stuff, but just so everyone's on the same page moving forward from here on out.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up. I will put that in the board's packet for next meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, moving on to agenda, item number six on the agenda, reports of committees. Sue, do you have a CIP committee update?
I do, I've reached out to, um, several people, um, wanting to be on the committee, and so I just need the board's okay on these folks, and they are Mark Halloran, who was on... And they are Mark Halloran, who was on last year and the year before, Michael Courier, same.
Those are both budget committee members?
Those are budget committee members. That's correct. Um, Zach Tyrell requested to be on the board, um, Joseph, of course, and it would be Ann Abear and Scott Whedon. I have reached out to a few other people and I've not heard back. Um, they're regular residents. Um, they thought they might, but they needed to think about it. So if they decide to, I will certainly come back to the board with their names.
Is there any statutory reason that we need people who aren't on other boards? And, well, I guess you have, well, I mean, that aren't also in the budget committee as well. Is there any reason we need to have other people on there or, I'm just curious?
In, in towns without an active town manager, it's, sometimes it's nice to have, um, heads of departments like fire chief, police chief. But, you know, because we have a very active town manager who communicates with them, I don't, I don't think it's as necessary here.
We don't need like independent town members who are not also in the budget committee to distinguish it from the CIP?
We had, I think we did the first year and I know.
I was.
Brooke, Brooke Wakefield was as well. I mean.
Right.
We, we, you can, we can open it up to.
Absolutely.
I don't know if it would be worth.
Hey, I'm not trying to hold it up or anything. I'm just kind of curious if we have any rules about that.
Well, I mean, I, I think people can join in the, like, is there a, a point at which we have to define who the CIP committee is for the year?
No. No, not to my knowledge. Um, I think it's.
I'm sure Scott Whedon could, could share a request that if anybody really wants to be on the CIP committee, we could entertain requests. I think it is good to involve the public in the process.
I do too. I think it's really important. And, um, what I would like to do is kind of start earlier in the year and bring the CIP committee together at some point and just kind of go through, because going through the master plan as well as we did a, a meeting ago, I recognize some things in there that we really should be addressing. So I would like to kind of talk to the town department heads to find out if in fact it's something that they have concerns with or if it's something they should be thinking about. So I would kind of like to join the committee together, um, early in the year as opposed to waiting until the end of the summer when a lot of the process has already happened. And a perfect example of that was last year when you brought up that, um, issue that was, everything had already been set in stone. And it was last minute and, um, it really should have been addressed earlier in the year. So it's just something that can be talked about.
So, so one of the thing, one of the things I wonder about is, um, it seems like a lot of the capital expenses are, are highway-related. And I'm wondering if, if it would be good to have Steve on the committee as, as a, as a, as a member, the, the road agent?
Sure. I will reach out to him. I was going to reach out to him because he was the one that I wanted to speak with because there's a lot of things in the master plan that.
Right.
Relate to, to.
Seems like, you know, if, you know, the, the police and fire expenses are somewhat regular and predictable. But like the, it seems like the, the, the road maintenance costs, especially when you get to bridges, like those are highly variable. And it's probably, if he's got time to be available for that planning part of it, it would seem like he would be a, a strong asset. What do you think, Joseph?
Yeah, I think he would certainly bring a, a good.
I don't, I don't know how well he tolerates a lot of meetings, but.
Yeah.
He seems like a nice guy.
He's, he's always, uh, willing to help. I certainly don't want to volunteer his, his time without checking with him first. But I, I get, I mean, I know he's. Always willing to, to support town efforts and he's really, uh, I know he's thinking about capital expenditures over the future too. So I, I think if he's willing to, he would probably be.
Yeah.
A good asset.
And his administrative assistant is very good and I think she's very, she doesn't mind getting involved as well, but I will reach out to them. I know that all of the department heads, they all, I, I would like to reach out to all of them early in the year just to say, don't think, don't forget about this. Um, I know Scott does that and he's very good at that, but it would just kind of get the committee together to try to. So that's kind of.
One of the things that might be worth clarifying is, is how we define capital. Only because it seems like the CIP has a lot of recurring, regular expenses that. I mean, while it's a good place to track them, it, it, and, and honestly, the, the system that Joseph has been using to track them has, has, makes it really easy to track things, but like, it doesn't have to, like, if we're buying a police cruiser every year and it's the same cost every year, it really doesn't need to be part of the CIP because it's almost a regular expense. You know, it's you, it's supposed to be non-recurring, unique costs. I'm getting head nods in the back, but, you know, if, if it's, you know, if it's something where we buy like one cruiser one year and then two cruisers next year and then one cruiser the year after, maybe then. But if it's one a year, like, it's just kind of noise in the, in the whole mix.
That's a good point.
So that's where we're at at this early stage of the game. Just try to get these people together on the board. Your permission and we'll go from there.
I think that sounds good.
Whatever you want.
Member of the public, you know, wants to, uh, step forward and volunteer their time, I think that's always great. And I know.
Members of the public.
Looking at one, two, three, four, five, six members as stated, you know, I think there's certainly room. And maybe Steve, seventh, you know, so there's certainly room for a couple more members without it.
What's Steve's last name?
Too convoluted.
Sorry.
What's Steve's last name?
Saint Pierre.
Saint, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe Steve doesn't have the time to dedicate to all the meetings and even more just hyper-focus on his time with the highway. But, well, thank you for that update, Sue.
Sure.
That sounds good.
Are the committee members, is everyone else okay with the committee members, members that have been listed?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Do you want to give a quick update to the, um, other committees, LRPC? I can't remember where we were a month ago.
I love LRPC updates. So can we, other committees, Lake Region Planning Commission?
I, I can't, I can't remember where we were a month ago, but at this point, both the commissioners and the executive board of the LRPC have voted positively to move forward our ten-year plan project on North Main Street, Route Three. As their second-tier project, although the first, like their choice one is just basically finishing up funding of last year's project, which is in Laconia. But basically after the tail end of the Laconia project, we are the choice number one for their first, like, real project. And so LRPC has pushed that forward.
Excellent.
So, which means it still needs to go to the state and get the side of the pond, um, and we can help, um, advocate for that.
Is that the executive council that looks at that?
Um, that is the, I always forget the name of that group.
Yeah, it's the, the, it first goes to the GACIT, which is the Governor's Advisory Commission on Intermodal Transportation, who holds, which is a, basically a subgroup of the executive council who goes around and holds public hearings throughout the state and then brings the whole thing back to the rest of the executive council and the governor.
But the GACIT's really the big one to convince.
So the GACIT, if you're a GACIT member on the board of the GACIT, you're also an executive counselor in the state?
I believe at least one, um, every, well, I don't, I don't want to misspeak. I don't actually know the exact composition of the GACIT, but it is, it is, it includes executive counselors. At least, at least some.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, great job. That's only five of them.
Next question?
Yeah, please.
John, what does the project entail?
It entails redoing, regrading, straightening out the road north on, on Main Street going towards the Common Man. It was, it's gone back and forth, you know, one and a two-phase project. Um, LRPC wants to put it forth as a one-phase project, all in one, which also gives the second phase of that, which was the second phase, a greater opportunity to not, um, get pushed back on because it's a little bit more pedestrian, bicycle-oriented than phase one, which is like a really, much more holistically the road plus all that other stuff. Um, and ideally I'd like to give equal weight to all those things, but DOT does not always. And so it, for the type of project it is, it helps to have it all as one phase. A, a hiccup is that at this point, they're, they are anticipating act-, asking for matching funds. But if we do get, if we didn't think would be the case. At this point, however, if it does get approved, um, we've got ten years to haggle it out with the state and DOT to figure out in fact if we have to pay matching funds.
Okay.
And it's, if it starts that way, it doesn't always end that way.
Correct.
And it's a, the real reason to, is this, say, yes, we'll take it and then figure it out that part, um, going forward.
We can, we can probably come up with funds somewhere.
Or maybe we won't even need to match, ideally, but, um.
Typically, a town that's not an urban compact doesn't require a match for a ten-year plan project. It's, it's unusual. But as John said, that if it moves forward into the plan, ten to twelve years to, to work out those details.
So face it, the, the little hump.
Yeah.
Where the, um, a swamp chumucky thing is near the armory is going to be flattened out a little bit, straightened out, have more room for multimodal transportation, like bicycles and a sidewalk. Um, going all the way down across the bridge.
Yeah.
And.
Definitely a squeeze right there.
Uh, and there's a lot of people walking there.
Yeah.
Or walking in the dark in like the woods because they're not supposed to walk along the road, like, which is also not really nice at night. Um, so it's, it's a win-win, I think, if it happens.
There's no safe way to walk along that road from Toby Road to the University Park and why?
I think, I, I walk on the train tracks if I do, but it's not great either.
Yeah, that's not safe either.
Awesome.
Train coming.
Right, that's, that's what many, from what we've heard anecdotally from the university and from Plymouth Police, that's, that's what most people probably do if we have to put people in a most, including guests staying at the Common Man Inn up on Foster Street who may want to, uh, bike at Langdon Woods or go downtown on foot. Or maybe they've rented a bike from the bike shop that's affiliated with the Common Man there. Um, we, we have a lot of people walking those train tracks and it's, it's definitely not optimal. And phase two, as you alluded to, John, actually continues that sidewalk up past the, uh, Tenny Mountain Highway interchange and all the way to Fairgrounds Road. So it would tie, uh, the end of Fairgrounds Road into that, that sidewalk as well, basically just continuing it a little further. But the real dollar-wise, the bulk of the project is lowering, straightening the area around the Armory Road intersection, which is really, you know, the road speed limit goes up to forty miles an hour right at the top of a hill just before that sloping curve where you have armory vehicles, as well as vehicles from the Plymouth State Cogen Plant, uh, coming in and out, as well as a lot of traffic from the parking lot. It's, it's a, it's a difficult stretch of road. And certainly the Plymouth Police have identified to us that that is the, other than Smithbridge Road and Tenny Mountain Highway, which is already in the ten-year plan, this is their biggest concern, uh, is from.
And before we leave, um, the LRPC, one thing I will mention, and I know it's state politics, um, but the current state budget cuts all funding from the state for our regional planning commissions. Just worth noting. Not a lot of money, but it's well-used.
Can I say one thing related to that North Main Street project? So the Plymouth Rotary has, has done, um, been involved in several projects around town. So they were instrumental in, in building the original skate park, uh, the amphitheater. Uh, one of the things they're investigating right now is the potential of creating, um, or improving a, a pedestrian path along the south side of the Baker River from North Main, potentially all the way to, to Hannaford or maybe even beyond, so.
You mean East Flumcham?
Yep.
Who, who's in that?
Uh, Plymouth Rotary.
Conservation commission's in on it.
Yeah, I think, I think that we're, the Rotary is trying to reach out to all of the interested parties, meaning, including, you know, Conservation Commission, um, Water and Sewer, the college, the, the SAU. You know, there are several landowners through there, but I think it would be, um, a, a nice tie-in to have better pedestrian access or a recreational walking trail along that space.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Good to know.
And it's nice to know that, you know, the, the group that has had success with other projects in town is interested and has funds available to contribute to that.
Great.
All good, it is. Thank you. Any other updates from committees? John, thank you very much. I always love hearing updates from LRPC. Well, I know when it's like your, I know it's like your off-season, we hear nothing for six months.
Well, yeah, because we are busy again.
Yeah.
We have our annual meeting in a month and a half to.
Mark Whiteout.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no other, uh, reports from any committees, we'll move on to new business. Discussing the Housing Master Plan Chapter project. Judy, would you like to join us?
Yay!
For members of the audience, this is Judy Barrett from Barrett Planning Group.
She's not quite getting it out of herself.
You gotta walk, the wires are a little treacherous.
We got wires in the bottom and the top now.
Sorry.
At least you're not tall enough to hit the ones on the top. Nice to see you, Judy.
It's wonderful to see you. It only took me almost four hours to get here.
Oh, my lord.
It was the worst ever trip trying to get to Plymouth.
Yeah.
It's usually very easy to get here, but.
The toll booths and hooks that are, are, are challenged these days, aren't they?
Yeah, I saw that. That was part of it, but it was mostly Boston.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's just horrendous.
The weather gets nice.
Absolutely horrendous. So how are you all? Everything calm and wonderful here?
I don't know.
We're here.
Maybe.
We had frost this morning. It was thirty degrees.
So I refuse to give into winter now. I refuse to give into anything except this summer. Sorry. Anyway.
Tomato's up.
So I know you guys had a discussion, was it the last, last meeting? Um, about kind of where things stand with the existing master plan? And I haven't finished going through that yet, um, but I've been thinking about it. And I guess what I'd really like to know is, um, well, there's a couple of things. One is to get a sense from you folks about what you want this housing chapter to do for you. How do you see this helping the town? Don't everybody jump in at once, but I want to know.
Affordable housing, we don't have any. We don't have any.
Are we ready to talk about affordable housing here? Because I got a lot of mixed messages last time I worked with you.
Well, the town doesn't have, I'm telling you what I know. We don't have enough.
Okay.
I would add that there's a few areas of town, um, well, I, I want to preface this by saying we identified some areas that, and Hop One, that came out of our last master plan. And I think, in my opinion, there's some unfinished business there to get a couple of those through still, um, in my own opinion. I would, I think there's less of a clear idea about what we should do, A, downtown in the Village Commercial, and B, along Tenny Mountain Highway, unless the state gives us their answer for us or something, because the state's considering some interesting bills.
Right.
Like, including mandating the by-right housing, including multifamily housing in commercial zones. If that's a commercial zone as opposed to an industrial commercial zone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because industrial's a whole other issue. Anyway, but, um, assuming the state does not tell us what to do there, I think we should have a serious conversation about whether or not we want housing there and that's part of our plan there. We already got housing in the veterans' housing. We've got Habitat talking about housing. And I think we really need to figure out for ourselves what our vision is along Tenny Mountain Highway. And downtown here. I mean, I've talked to people who say, I'd love to have an apartment downtown. And it's just like not a possibility. Um, and these aren't like people like common concern historically has been like, oh, we don't like hold downtown full of students living there. This is not students I'm hearing from. It's like other people. And, I mean, even if it was, I'm not sure if it's a problem or not, but like, um, I think a real, I would like to see a real conversation downtown at Tenny Mountain Highway. And, and of course broadly, it's affordable housing and lots of other issues, but, um, those are the two things kind of rolling in my brain.
I, I can think of a couple of buildings on Main Street that could be much more effectively utilized for housing if we did not have a six, six-unit-per-building limitation, especially in the Village Commercial. Um, ma- maybe for new construction, but, you know, there, there are a few buildings where there's potential to have smaller, more affordable apartments in spaces where they're currently fairly large and, and there's not an allowance to, to do that.
Actually, I would be curious along those same lines of considering taking unit limits off of buildings that already exist, if they can be repurposed in a way that would allow them to be more adequately utilized.
Maybe. Who defines adequate, though?
If you have a building that already exists, that you're not changing, you know, the character or whatever of the place by adding more units, and a developer says like, or landlord, like, I think I could put more units in here and use it better. Or the whole idea of like so, so, some communities are doing that, converting old large farmhouses into multi-unit housing and stuff like that. You know, if you could do that and, and a, an existing building, why do we want to stop someone from doing that?
Well, I could, I, we want, we don't want to stop some, but the biggest roadblock I think we've had downtown is the parking. I, like, and I, I'm not saying we want to stop, so I just.
I think we should continue to investigate that. I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We've talked about other, other potential.
And figure out how to get past that. That's a huge thing because that's always a number-one concern front and center is.
I think, but that can be part of the study, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask a que-, like, why is it that? Can I ask a que, like, why is it that I never have a problem finding a parking space downtown, no matter when I come here?
I don't find it to be a problem either, honestly.
I just, I just, I'm wondering, like, what is the parking problem?
Right.
Is it because people can't park where they want to park? Or?
Can I, can I pipe in for a second?
I'm just curious.
Do you come up here during the day, honestly?
Yeah, I've been here, oh, I've, I've been here many times and I've not been here working with you, so.
Because I can't find parking spots in front of Town Hall. I can't find parking spots around the Common throughout the day.
You can walk a half block.
I feel it. What?
You can walk a half block.
Yeah, I'm not, but I'm saying there's a huge parking concern. So you guys are talking about adding housing, and talk to business owners, and they, they have serious concerns about adding more units downtown without the parking.
I, I, I just want to say that, what was it, ten years ago the house, the parking study was done? I can't remember. Like, ten years ago, parking study was done.
You haven't come up with an answer for parking yet, and I hear you're a luxury apartment, affordable apartments, all these apartments downtown. And I'm not against apartments downtown.
Right.
But we don't address the parking. If you figure out the parking, we have much better success of getting housing.
If I may for a second. I, I do want to explore the issue. I don't necessarily have all the answers at this point.
This is not the forum, this is not the night to talk about.
I would, I would say that we did a study, though, and in that study, if you look broadly at downtown, we have lots of parking.
Yeah.
Um, about a year ago, my students did a kind of lesser version of that study and found out if you look around downtown broadly, there's tons of parking if you're willing to walk more than a block. Um, we have a walkability problem downtown with crosswalks and lighting and stuff like that.
Right.
Um, which if people felt safer to walk longer distances and more inviting, um, they would be willing to walk that block or two to actually get where they're going from their parking space. Um, I would say with better parking management, we could do a whole lot better with our parking downtown. And I would also add, although I'm not a fan of parking mandates, if we put a parking mandate in downtown for residential use, and that is what it took to get us to like think more openly about parking down there and leave it to the developer, if you can figure out the parking, go for it. I'd be happy with that. But we can have that discussion in a few months.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just, I would just like to reopen that conversation.
I, I would just like to throw out there a couple, there are a couple of solutions for parking that I've, I've heard discussed in the past couple of months that have real legs that could work. So one, one is that, that we are, we already know there's, uh, I'm sorry, um, man, where's my map? Um, we already know there's, there's parking above the bank, uh, where, um, the, the old, the old bank on Main Street, that's becoming, yeah, that's becoming.
Midstate?
The library's parking.
Midstate is?
Where midstate's going in. So there's, there's that parking lot.
Gould Terrace.
Yes, Gould Terrace. Gould Terrace could be extended and potentially looped back to another road, so.
It used to be.
Right. So there's, there's potential to expand Gould Terrace, but it's functional. And, and it's undeveloped space, so that, that could be easily worked, you know, there are landlords that have property on Main Street who have recently had to give up residential permits because there wasn't parking in the area. The other, the other thing I've heard mentioned is that, um, I, I believe someone has blueprints for a parking garage across the street from Town Hall, between Town Hall and Silver Center. I mean, not, not super tall, but just terraced entry, so that it, like, so that towards Main Street would be at least, at least, I think the upper tier would go out over the existing parking lot. And so, I mean, that would add, that would, that might double the downtown parking, honestly.
And I don't think the solution necessarily needs to be, sort of like housing, I don't think the solution needs to be sixty more parking spaces.
No, but there, there are potential solutions. Like, I don't think parking should stop us from talking about improving potential for developing residential.
And I'm sorry if that was construed, because I'm not trying to stop the discussion.
Right, right.
Just saying that we always get there, yeah.
One last comment about parking?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, besides parking garages being incredibly expensive to build.
Sure.
Um, and I don't know that town taxpayers would go for that. Um, if you actually look around town at reserved spots for the university, for certain businesses, for the senior center, there are all sorts of spots that are heavily used in certain parts of the day and not used at all at other parts of the day that feed into other peak, like Flying Monkey versus University or something.
Yeah.
Um, if we actually came up together where they shared use of those spaces that was well-managed, we have so much parking in this town.
Right.
And there's technology out there that helps us do things like that.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, but I, again, I don't, I'm not sure that's a conversation for tonight, but, um, there are lots of creative solutions out there, I think, if you want to. Yeah. Anyway, so I, I would love to look at downtown and, and wade into the parking.
And Judy, I will be videotaping when there's no parking and sending you examples.
That's fine.
No, it just makes me, I just chuckle about it. I must, somebody must be watching over me, but honest to God, every time I come here, I don't care if it's on a weekend, it's a midday, you know, or time, I mean, like now I wouldn't expect a problem.
Maybe the expectations of the people that actually live here are misconstrued, I guess.
I don't, you know, I don't know. I just like, I can always find a spot, and I think, well.
I know last summer I was here, town business budget meetings, couldn't find a parking place anywhere around here, parked down on Main Street, and both time I got parking tickets. So parking is an issue, so that, just, just to relieve you.
If there are events at the seniors, at the Silver Center, it can be a problem. If there are events at the Monkey. But like, there's lots of parking around town.
I think that it's, there's like, like John was saying, there are these moments of high use.
Right.
And if you experience the high use times of day.
It's the time of day.
Yeah, lunchtime in the fall, when we have a lot of people visiting, it can be very, very, very busy downtown. And if you live here year-round and you're trying to find a parking spot when there are a lot of visitors here, it can be frustrating. That's my perception of it.
Even those high-use times, there are other parking spaces that are experiencing low-use times at a lot of those high-use times.
Yep.
And there are towns, even in the state, who have actually pooled their spaces together to collectively manage them.
Oh, yeah.
And it's doable.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been done.
Parking ticket, Sue?
Two, and I paid them both. I didn't ask for a wave.
You have the Scott?
Nope, I paid them.
I just want to say that, you, you know, the downtown areas had a parking problem ever since I can remember.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, Tenney Mountain Highway doesn't have a parking problem.
Right.
And, uh, in, you know, if you, if you're gonna prevent people from building a residential building that is limited to six units, it's not really economically feasible for a developer to do it. And there could be residential units built along Tenney Mountain Highway that are not in the front commercial property, but in the back. You, you know, like, behind the stores.
There's, there's a planning term for types of buildings where it's first-floor commercial and two stories of residential.
Yeah, mixed use.
Is it just mixed use?
Two over one.
But, but I think, I mean, there's, there's something in the, in the building code that really favors, like, you can actually build first-floor commercial and, and two stories of residential above, under, like, an easier version of the code.
Right.
Well, that's what the glass shop did.
I think it seems to be appealing to a lot of areas.
Yep.
Oh, is that what it's that tall?
There's two apartments up top.
Or in a place like Tenney.
Flowersmiths, four apartments up top.
Sure.
Or a place like Tenney Mountain Highway, you can even do like mixed use separated by building on a single lot even.
Yeah, horizontal mix.
And, and they will both work in different ways.
Yeah.
And sometimes that works better from a development perspective. I mean, I like top-of-the-shop projects, but they don't always work or they don't always make sense for a given site. So a horizontal mix where the housing might be for the rear of the site, um, you know, I mean, those are certainly plausible options.
Interesting.
Somebody recently commented that, like, um, Fugaki and, oh, man, what's that Mexican place?
Familia?
Yeah, they, they both have housing on site. And like, I never even noticed it, but there, there's, both of those restaurants have housing on site. And it's like.
Really?
And, and explains the place for kitchen staff to live, like, for, for a plate. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's, there's a house, like, if you look at the restaurant, there's a house in the back left.
That was my grandmother's house.
Was it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Got another non-performing situation?
I used to play there when I was a kid.
But, but yeah, I mean, if you look at, you know, a place like, um, like, uh, Grotto or, or, um,
Mm-hmm.
um, Yamas, like, there's, there's no housing right there, so like, you know.
Flowersmiths has, uh, you know, upstairs, they have apartments.
So for restaurants, you know, if, if they could do, you know, first-floor restaurant with residential over it, it's, it's affordable housing for people that live and work along Tenney Mountain Highway. I don't think that's out of character for what I think of a thriving.
Yeah, I like the.
Commercial, you know, area would be.
I mean, I think, you know, a lot of the zoning changes that you took on last year, um, there was a lot of zoning that went to town meeting, and, and it all passed and it was marvelous.
Yeah.
But in a way, we sort of skirted around the edges, you know? We were almost like fixing things that had been created over time, like bringing the lot area back to what it was at one time. And those were important. I, I mean, I was thrilled to see those changes. Um, but I still feel like there's a bigger conversation to be had that sort of.
Do you guys have paperwork you need signed?
Yes, but I was gonna track him down later.
You sure?
Yeah, Jack, go.
Just slide it out, somebody else'll sign it for you. We'll, we'll keep talking.
Thank you very much.
Um.
There you go.
There was a door that was left a crack open in that conversation.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to figure out, are we opening the door or not? Because I don't want to put you people through a big round of frustration here. But when I look at the last master plan, I, I mean, I'm still kind of surprised. Do I need to do something to like be quiet for a minute?
No.
No, keep going.
Sorry, Tim.
I don't, I don't want to drag you people through a conversation that you're not up for. So I'll just give you an example. To me, Tenney Mountain, uh, Tenney Mountain, um, Fairgrounds Road was a no-brainer. I'm just coming, just as an outsider, just coming in here.
Thanks.
And all the conversations that went on here were pretty positive about Fairgrounds Road until all of a sudden someone showed up at a hearing, didn't like it, and the board pulled back.
I think, I think we should revisit that.
I mean, I just, so I couldn't, I, for, as an outsider, I couldn't figure out what was going on. Like, one guy shows up who's, who, you know, may have had legitimate concerns, but of a sudden it was gone. After three meetings where it seemed like the board was going to go forward. So I look at the last master plan, I'm trying to figure out, how much am I looking back? And how much am I looking forward in doing this element of the plan? Because if we're gonna at least look at, well, what's left undone from the previous plan that has residential implications, Fairgrounds Road is one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Am I, what's the appetite for talking about that? Um, I mean, just getting at the issue of housing diversity, I, I agree with you about the six-unit rule. I mean, if you really are serious about providing housing choice, you need to, you need to deal with that. But that's just one piece, you know? There's other types of housing development that could be enabled here if you had the zoning to do it. Smaller cottage-type, court-type projects, you know, those kinds of things might be fine on Fairgrounds Road. And our, our essentially single-family, sometimes duplex, but very small dwellings organized around common space, they're lovely projects. I don't, I can't for the life of me imagine why that wouldn't work in Plymouth. But I don't want to be, I don't want to force anything on you, I guess is my point.
You referred to as like cottage-type, you said?
Yeah, it's like cottage court is what it's called. It's cottage court. It's a nice approach.
They have, they have a shared interior.
Yeah.
Backyard, if you will.
Yeah, exactly.
Is, is that like where they'd have like a development, would have like a parking area and then sidewalks to people's homes kind of thing?
The parking is typically be- behind the units. Um, if, if you can organize the site that way, so it's alley parking, therefore, all the units are facing like common space, but not necessarily parking. And I've seen them also done where there's a limited allowance for parking in front of dwellings, so it's not one design.
I was trying to think of the community that was down in Peterborough where they had, like, you kind of drive in and park and.
My town.
Yeah.
I know all about Peterborough.
In Dover, Portsmouth.
Dover did it.
Yeah.
Dover.
Um, we checked it out and wild, like, people love living there. Yeah, like, you were parked, yeah, it's, uh, it was, it was something else, yeah.
I know, it's lovely. I mean, but that's like, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
But I need some direction here, because I, I think there's opportunities here, but it's up to you.
This section of Fairgrounds Road from just about where the Fairgrounds are.
Yeah.
Going out to Quincy Road.
Yeah.
Is predominantly agricultural.
Mm-hmm.
And I think those people were upset about it.
Although that's not where the overlay was.
No, it didn't.
Yeah.
The overlay is the other direction.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
They were still really upset, and I think that was, those were the voices, we didn't hear them at the meetings. We heard them outside, because I got several phone calls from people down that way. So they were very concerned about it, and I tried to show them, I, you know, we showed them the overlay. We certainly did a lot of work on that. You know, you were involved.
Um. And I respect that, Sue. I'm just, it's just, I would have, I think if people really oppose something, they should be challenged to come to the hearing, and if they can't come to the hearing, then maybe they're not that concerned. And I think it's a, really, it's a challenge for planning board members, you know, to, who's bucket am I carrying here?
Can I actually, this, I would say, at this point, we have a ton of outreach engagement for two zoning amendments that did not go to the voters. Um, we did a lot of diligence on both of them, and it's the Fairgrounds Road and it's Tenney Mountain.
Yeah.
Um, they were both really well-written, and we heard a ton of very positive feedback against, for both, and some negative feedback for both.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're up to me personally, I think we've done our diligence with engagement on those. I think it's time for the voters to say yes or no.
I.
And I, I mean, if, if you want closure, I mean, I wouldn't mind making a motion right now to bring them both to town meeting.
Oh, not. Cassidy to do that.
I'm just, no, I'm just saying, like, and, and then, like, it's up to the voters, and we can start thinking about other things. They can say yes or no, and then go on.
I don't support that motion, and.
And I didn't make a motion.
No, I don't support that idea, and, well, let me tell you why. Because I do think they should be revisited fully, and where I'd like to step, and I don't, I don't mean to go down a side route here, is where I'd like to step with a Tenney Mountain overlay, is I'd like to step back to the night before it was ten-thirty at night, and we're pretty much writing the plan to what they were dictating to us. Because sort of that's where I lost my understanding of it. And really, before that night, I was on board, and then I think I got lost when that night took place. And I'd like to, I'd like to fully revisit it and see, like, and take a step back of like, hey, what did it look like before that night? And what was everything we were sort of rushing, like, literally, does this legally make sense? Oh, my gosh, yeah. Is that what you're looking for? Like, you know?
And I do think that's a better approach.
I didn't like having to do that.
Yeah.
Although I have to say, I, I reread it after.
That became my, um, and that, that, so, yeah, I would love to revisit.
Yeah.
And sort of, really, that's a folk, where I'd like to, I guess, where to start on that, focus back in at that point.
I reread it after that point, and I was amazed at just, it was actually pretty damn good. Um, and I can't believe it, because we were all kind of fried. Um, but we, I think, I actually, I think we actually came up with a really good, um, solution.
I don't know, if you want to talk of, like, I'm not saying it was a bad solution.
What I found most surprising, and I don't want to go too far back there, we seem to have pulled that not because of that, but because of something completely different and unrelated.
What was that?
Which was water sewer issues and wetlands.
Okay.
Um, which would have been addressed by other means anyway.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't need to be part of this discussion.
It's not a zoning issue.
But, um, I absolutely would want, and I, I, my preference would be to have more engagement and discussion. Um, but I would want to see that in some form go before the voters this year, and the voters can say yes or no. And the same thing for Fairgrounds Road, let the voters decide. We've written a pretty good thing here. We can tweak it a little bit. Let the voters decide. And then we can start looking forward.
I'm gonna jump in.
Yes.
I wish you also hadn't made some of the edits that you made at the last minute. Um, so I, I know, I think, where you're coming from. Um, there's always this delicate balance between, you want to get something done, and you have a vision for what you think that should be, and then an applicant who comes forward and says, "Well, it's not exactly what I want."
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think when the applicant wants, or the proponent wants other edits, and it's the eleventh hour, you don't have to take them at the eleventh hour.
Mm-hmm.
You can go with what your heart says is the right thing to do, and you can revisit the zoning in another year and perhaps make some amendments at that point. But I don't think you ever should feel, whether it's Tenney Mountain or anything else, that you have to bag something at the eleventh hour because somebody says, "Well, I'd like you to make these following five or six changes." So, you know, I don't want to turn this whole thing into a zoning exercise, but, I mean, clearly, it's a master plan. So land use is a big part of it, and I, the reason I'm bringing all this up is I don't want to drag you guys through a conversation you don't want to have. a conversation you don't want to have. But I keep going back to the housing needs assessment, which was like the heart of the Hop 1 project, and there's unfinished business. So I'm trying to get a sense of, how can this master plan element help you deal with some of that unfinished business if you want to? And are there other things that you might like this master plan element to explore that are not zoning related? And you don't have to answer that tonight, but I'd like you to think about it.
Can you give an example of not zoning related?
Yeah, I mean, something like having a, a local affordable housing trust, or perhaps working, forming a relationship with a land trust to do affordable housing on a land lease basis, so, or ground lease basis, so you have actually an entity that's gonna manage it well. Or be able to do, you know, pretty deeply affordable housing, to be able to do homeownership housing. So partnerships, you know, sometimes you might look at becoming more competitive perhaps for certain types of subsidy to support workforce housing. I mean, there's a variety of ways you can think about this. But I, I just, I just don't, I don't want to, I don't want to force you to talk about something you don't want to talk about. But I feel like there's this unfinished business, and I just want to know, like, as a planner, I feel obligated to bring this stuff up again.
Is there like non-zoning, I don't want to say tactics, but there are non-zoning ways for, like, mid-level housing, right? Like, we're not talking about luxury housing, and we're not talking about affordable housing. We're just talking about mid-level housing. Is there non-zoning, I'm gonna use the word tactics, that's not what I mean though, but is there non-zoning things for like mid-level housing, if you will? And I know I'm sort of butchering that term mid-level.
A land trust.
Okay.
But, but again, the zoning has to make sense. I mean, you're not gonna get, you know, sort of mid-priced housing on, on larger lots. So.
I hate to say it, but workforce is, is supposed to be mid-price. It's supposed to be affordable.
It is, it's 100% of AMI.
Or missing middle.
What's that?
100% of median income.
You're talking about missing middle.
Missing middle, if you look, Cody, I think there's something in the sun.
That's a zoning, that's zoning, you need zoning for missing middle.
So.
Yeah.
I have a question about land trusts.
Yeah.
They've crossed my mind before, and I've always thought to myself Plymouth is probably kind of too small to organize a land trust. And obviously, there are others land trusts you can join with. Is it feasible to create a kind of regional land trust with local communities?
Sure.
Is there precedent for that happening among small towns in an area like this?
Yeah. Here in New Hampshire, I don't think so.
Okay.
The Conservation Commission has been working with land trusts on projects.
They know how to do.
And it works.
Conservation people know how to use a land trust. I was just having this conversation with someone about historic preservation restrictions about three hours ago.
Well, that tends to be a different kind of land trust, though.
But, but it's the, still the principle of through the restrictive, the restriction, you control the use. You control the pricing of the units when they resell. So you maintain that workforce price, pricing range.
Yeah. And Laconia area land trust is probably our closest one. Which they've, you know, they're working on the 64-unit mill project right at Ashland.
So, and, and sometimes it's worth it to just contact an active land trust and say, are you interested in working in Plymouth?
Yeah.
They are.
Well, see, so.
Our, our units, and this is an assumption, I don't want to get in a sidetrack.
Sure, that's okay. But, but I mean, that's an example of a non-zoning type of strategy. You know, just a thought, I don't, off the top of my head, it's, it's almost a little bit hard to think about some that aren't, because it is so tied to land use regulations, but.
Thank you.
You know, typically, a master plan housing element looks at the, the established residential development pattern, the age of housing. Sometimes you will look at housing conditions. If you have an older housing stock that needs a lot of work, you know, that might lend itself toward looking at maybe a community revitalization tax credit approach for homeownership rehab improvements.
Would that be an appropriate thing to look at for converting what are currently apartments into single-family homes? Which is maybe not what we're, maybe, so this, this town seems to have a lot of college housing and decreasing enrollment, and there are landlords that are considering turning what's currently, you know, apartments that may have been aimed at students in the past into either single-family housing or affordable family housing.
Or, or fewer, like, if you had six units, maybe three condos or something?
Maybe.
So that's why we brought up the RSA 79E community revitalization tax credit changes from a couple of years ago. We actually brought that up in the previous generation of.
The Russell Street area or something.
That was on topic, or, you know, along Pleasant Street.
I mean, to me, that's, that's a classic example of, you're not necessarily asking for more development.
Right.
You've got a nicely developed area, you want to preserve it, but you've got to make it economic for somebody to convert those buildings, so.
You know, I like that idea.
Something I just remember from Hop 1
Yeah.
was once it got off the board and into community discussions, I was pleasantly surprised at the level of openness and creativity among community members to a lot of different things. A lot of those community members did not have as much background as us on boards and all the ins and outs.
Yeah.
But it was really refreshing to hear all those community voices, and just how eager people were to find a solution some way, and a willingness to think creatively about that. And, and I do want to have the discussion on this board, like, what we're interested in, because obviously we have to provide you with guidance. I just am a little bit reticent to front-load it too much with what we want to do.
Yeah.
Because I really do want to hear again from the community, because I really had some great ideas last time.
Same.
And, and I, I agree. I wasn't, I guess I wasn't asking you to sort of script the direction of that, of that element of the plan tonight, as much as wanting to understand how you think it might be helpful to you as a planning board. That's really my question.
May I speak? I was, I was thinking about, so I joined the board after the hop. Everything, I kind of got onto the board through participating in the hop studies. And so I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone here in terms of being a member of the board and talking about this. Let me just say, first of all, that I'm very happy to talk about affordable housing solutions. Second of all, in terms of what the master plan should do for us, I think those missing pieces and that longer-term vision about where we want more housing to go should be in the master plan. Maybe that's too simple a statement.
No, it's, no, it's.
And maybe that's already written down somewhere that I just haven't seen, which is possible. But all of this discussion seems to be about where is, where do the people of the town want more potential housing to go?
And what types?
And what types, and what does it look like? I do think that matters to people, to an extent.
So I'm gonna give my opinion here. Versus fact, which I think most of us know probably, New Hampshire is the second oldest state in the country.
Is that funny?
It is a fact.
Population demographics.
We are the second oldest state in the country.
Okay, I did, I did think you mean historically, you mean age demographic.
Oh, yeah, age.
Yes.
We are the, we are the second oldest people in this country. And in terms of sustaining our vitality going forward, this is not sustainable. We need young people. We need young professionals who might live in a starter home or an apartment or something, who don't want to own a large house, because they're, they're just like making their way out of college or something. And they need a place to live and be successful locally. We need families. I know, like, kids are like the, like, so-called, like, the bane of our existence because we have to pay for them or something. We need families and young people in this town and in this state to maintain any kind of sustainable economy and not just put all of our money and resources into running nursing homes. And I'm saying that not to be like ageist or anything, in terms, we need a broad demographic, including older populations and younger populations and everyone in between. And we don't have that in this state. And we, for the sake of the college that we have in this town at all. And I've heard a lot of conversations in which we like to find ways of excluding families, because they're gonna be a burden on our schools or something. What is also a burden on our schools is having under-enrolled schools. The biggest problem our schools in this state are having right now is being under-enrolled and not having enough students to actually be able to afford to keep them going. It's not that they're over-enrolled. We need families. We need young professionals. And this state and this town is not doing a great job of keeping those people here.
Most of what you're talking about.
And that's, a lot of that is housing. It's job opportunity and it's housing.
It is. I mean, there's, there's competition for housing. I mean, part of it is that, you know, our legislature has set priorities to make this a state that's desirable for retirees. Like, people who are on fixed incomes are happy to be here, we have very low taxes, like, it's a very appealing place to be if you're retired. But like, it makes it competitive for families to afford to live here. So it's, you know, in a lot of ways, the wages that our local businesses pay are not sufficient to allow for the existing housing to be affordable, because we're constantly seeing an influx of retiree money that has, it's a little bit less limited, and they can out, out purchase young families in the marketplace. It's, it's, that's not gonna change.
But we can try to find whatever solutions we can within that unfortunate situation.
Colder winters, colder winters will keep the old people away.
Are your enrollments going down here?
At Pennsyl State University, they are, I don't know about the elementary schools.
Yeah, I think enrollment at the elementary school, I think, is on the downward trend. It was kind of upward when I was on the board a few years ago, and I think it's on the downward trend now.
And I don't think it's just, sorry, Neil, go ahead.
What, John, what you're describing is actually happening in Vermont.
Oh, yeah.
They're a step ahead of us.
Yeah.
And the, uh, I guess I'll stop there.
No, no, I'm curious, what do you mean?
It's true.
Or maybe Judy can speak to that a little bit.
Loss of young people in Vermont is.
We have a whole, whole generation that hasn't, just hasn't made the transition yet. You know, we, we have a young, I don't know what you call them, Generation Z or.
You can say an age, we won't judge you.
You know, like 20 to 30 maybe? You know, they're, you know, they, they haven't got a car. All they have is a tel, a hand unit. It's a computer, it's a phone, it's, you know, it changes every year.
Yeah, and that's why I think when we say young professional.
They're not, they're not getting married, they're not having kids.
Yeah.
They're not getting on.
Yeah, there's, that's, there's no, they can't afford to.
And when they do, it's usually far fewer kids than they used to.
And I don't say that disparagingly, I mean, I was there not too long ago and felt the same struggle. New Hampshire's not easy for, you know, the fact that we constantly underfunds education tells people, you know, it drives college students away, college students tend to stay where they go to college. Like, it's more likely, if somebody goes to mass, they're more likely to stay there than to come back to New Hampshire and settle here.
So for us, though, we're not gonna solve the state issues.
We're not.
But we can think about what we can do locally to at least ameliorate some of those a bit and push back.
And I don't think it's just the, the entry level and the young professional that's really hurting. I really think, thank you for the new term, I didn't identify this, but the missing middle housing, the, not just the young professional that we're just gonna say is 21 to 29, but someone that's 30 to 40, the, someone that's getting up to midlife, the midlife professional too is also, I think, in a situation where it's like, hey, I can't afford anything either.
I'm not sure I could buy my house today.
I couldn't either.
I couldn't buy mine.
No. Not, not without the equity I have in the house. Like, you know, I couldn't afford to, like, if I had to buy my house new as a young person, I would not be able to afford it.
How do you want to deal with community engagement in this project? What are your thoughts about that? Joseph, I don't have your grant in front of me, so I don't remember. I mean, what was, what did, what are the expectations of hop? And then what are you, what are you guys thinking about?
Well, from Hop 1, I thought we did a great job with community engagement.
You guys did a fabulous job.
People were coming out, different crowds. It wasn't the same seven people every single time. You'd see the same faces, but you always see new people. Yeah, I thought if we can replicate something like that, that's a good baseline.
Well, it was the participation, and it's also the involvement of all of you. I mean, we don't always get to do projects where, like, the committee is hands-on at the tables with people, and that was really important. It wasn't just the consultants, and it was very, very well-done here, very well-done. But I need to have a sense of, like, what are your, I may have put thought into this too, but I'm just wondering if you've already thought about what you want for engagement on this project.
My own thought would be, it's nothing broad again in the beginning, to really get a kind of general barometer again of everyone, to see where we are right now. Might not be a bad idea, does what we did last time. And then, based upon what this board thinks, as well as what we hear from that kind of first round of engagement, dig down into some of the, like, issues that really need further digging. Whether that be the village core or, or some, or whatever we identify. But I think it would be helpful to start broad, at least briefly again, to kind of touch base again to see where we are, and invite people into the conversation if they weren't in the conversation last time. And then maybe we know some of the issues already that we've identified tonight that we want to dig further into, and maybe somebody kind of throws us a curveball, and we say like, yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask, since I didn't hear the things that you heard about Fairgrounds Road, what were people's concerns? When you were hearing people being concerned about it, what were they saying?
I think they didn't understand it. They didn't understand it, and it's the, it's the way it's, they can watch the meetings, and they hear us talk about it, and that's why a lot of times we'll say, could you define that? We're not saying it because we don't know it, but it's because people are gonna watch this tomorrow or the next day, and at least that can be defined. I do think that if we sat out there early on, like, within the next month or so, and just say, here's what we're looking at trying to discuss this summer, and just put it out there so people can be interested, if they're interested in it. But once they see Fairgrounds Road overlay, or they see Tenney Mountain overlay, that sparks certain interests. And I think if they know we're gonna be talking about it, then they're gonna watch. But I think we have to be really clear on our definitions and what we're talking about.
Okay.
A lot of the terms that we've used tonight, it's gonna go right over a lot of their heads.
Sure.
If we mention a grant, well, this is part of the second phase of the grant. As soon as you mention that, there's a good group of people that are gonna go, huh, I'm not gonna listen to that, because they just don't understand it. They don't, and they don't frankly, they just want to know the nuts and bolts of what we're doing. So I think if we can put it out there, what, this is possibly what we're gonna talk about this summer, and we'd really like people to know, be very transparent. And I think we will probably get people reaching out more.
It would also be nice for us to point out, if the tenure plan part two goes through, we could say we have road improvements on this end of Fairgrounds Road. And we already have, you know, tenure plan part one, which is the other end of the road, on Smith Bridge, in, in the plans. And I think to also alleviate people's fears of greater density along that road, to recognize that both kind of interchanges at either end are currently being thought about. And one of them is already on the hopper to be done in a bunch of years.
Yeah.
And the other one might be. I think that's also a big deal, because, especially one end of it, of course, we all know is a disaster. Smith Bridge Road, depending on the highway, yeah.
If I can address your question, I think what happened with the, the Fairgrounds Road overlay was that there was a resident who came in who felt like we weren't including some of the protections that were in the single-family zone, and that they should be extended to the overlay. So by the time we amended that, had the second hearing, I think the board thought that there wasn't enough time to get the information out to voters. My, my takeaway, after having gone through a couple of years of zoning amendments, is that sometimes we don't get feedback from the public, but I don't think that's a, I don't think, I think this board has interpreted that as people don't know or are afraid. And I think what happened this year kind of indicated to me that people understand it, and they're, like, no, you know, lack of concern is generally acceptance. And I don't think we should hold back, because we are concerned about it. I mean, I would feel more comfortable, as long as we put the legwork in to make thing, make sure that we're comfortable with the logistics of if an overlay is going to work, we should be comfortable putting it forward to voters and allowing them to have that say.
If I may just add to that, it also seemed very evident that when we talked about the Fairgrounds overlay at one of our meetings at the high school, which we did, I think it was our last meeting at the high school, for a fairly large group of people, the, the general consensus, with a few exceptions, I, I don't know, I bet the number, like, 85% maybe, were pretty darn positive about it. And as the group got smaller and smaller with public hearings, the only people who were left were the people who were still against it.
That's typical.
Yeah, that's what they do.
And then it seemed like, oh, well, look, everybody's against it. When in fact, the people who were for it just stopped showing up, I think as you were saying, Phil. But we did have a moment with a larger meeting in which most of those people were favorable or just indifferent, like, sure, go ahead, like, it makes sense, we have water and sewer there, like, it's in our master plan already from like 10 years ago, like. we said yes back then.
Well, I think whatever happened, we have to, like you said, we need to move forward, we can't go back because we can't change it and
Right.
So hopefully these are some suggestions that are going to be helpful to you. I trust whatever you, when you put things in front of us, it's very well done, it's very understandable and I, and I have a very high regard for what you do.
Thank you.
I feel the same way that Matt feels about the Tenny Mountain, I felt what you gave us was great and I kind of thought that the young man that was presenting late that night maybe shouldn't have gone that far, maybe should have settled with what we, you presented or we presented and just thought, we can make changes later. Just like we just said, we can always make changes later, but I think, you know, what you give us is great, so I'm hoping some of these ideas are going to help you to help us.
Yeah, thank you.
We should have gotten that feedback like two months earlier.
We did, we didn't act on it.
No, we didn't exactly get that actually.
We really waited till the eleventh hour.
They, they had sent us a bunch of requests earlier and, and we didn't, we didn't act on it because, and at the time, like, up until that hearing, I actually didn't feel like it was worthy of changing.
I remember our discussion about it.
And, and there was, there seemed to be a consensus of support from the board to say, can we do this tonight? And
I don't like that.
I didn't like it either. I, we did it, but I didn't like it.
Anyway, moving forward. Piece of advice for all of you, really. Decide what you want. Put it in writing. Put it out there and explain to people what you want. And there's always going to be some applicant who maybe has a different idea.
Sure.
Of course.
But the worst thing you can do for yourselves is start to change stuff at the eleventh hour, it is never, ever a good idea and I'm not lecturing you, I'm just saying, I would not do that again. Let them come back in another year and propose amendments, but go with, go with the path with a heart on this and that's what I saw you doing and then at the eleventh hour shift and I thought there are people who are going to see this as caving to a developer and you just can't do that.
You know, the, the legislature does extensive statutory revision.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yes, they do.
All the time.
They're making, there's, there's all kinds of stuff in the legislature this year about land use law in New Hampshire, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff going on.
They have to start with something and I felt we had that start and then that was, but anyway.
Oh, go ahead.
I think just moving forward and getting started, I think just get it out there, this is what we're going to talk about folks and just move on.
May I ask, John?
May, may I ask for a second?
Sure.
John, please.
I believe one of the missed opportunities we had last time around, and I'm not blaming anybody for that, I just think it was an interesting moment that was hard to follow up on and I wonder if, thinking about it a little bit earlier, we can maybe follow up on it a little bit better, which is we got the feedback in the survey that said, nobody wants more than six units. Then we did the visual preferences survey and all of a sudden, there were certain large buildings that people said, absolutely no way, we don't want in Plymouth, and there are other ones that people said, yeah, not bad, depending on where it is. I wonder if there's a way of revisiting that where we can think about ways of regulating what multifamily housing means and thinking about some of those concerns where most of us, when we hear that, like, oh, multifamily housing, like twenty units or something, a lot of us jump to the worst case scenario of what that means in our heads. And there are a lot of good case scenarios for what that can mean. And I think the engagement that we did with the visual preferences survey showed that a lot of community members were on that page. That they liked it this way, but definitely not that way. And if we could somehow kind of crack that nut a little bit more thoroughly and see how that could actually be written into actual language, that could make the community feel more comfortable that we cannot just throw the character out the window and still meet people's needs in an affordable way for developers and people living here. I would love to see some more progress on that front.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could do that, I just, I just want to get clear direction from the board because I didn't get a sense last year or the year before, I guess I've been working with you for a while, but, you know, that there was a real appetite on the board. And, you know, I, I've been on the planning board, on the zoning board of appeals, and I, you're my client, right, so I look to the board for direction and if I'm not getting direction that you actually want to tackle the issue of multifamily housing, I'm not going to go there. Because I want to focus on something else that you do want to do.
So, I mean, for think about master planning, if we can put a three-story large hotel out on Tenny Mountain Highway with parking, I don't know why we can't put a three-story building with housing out on Tenny Mountain Highway with parking. And that's where we have to think about master planning, does that mean our master plan also includes plans for multimodal transportation, sidewalks and all that other stuff? And what does that cost and all that sort of stuff, and that's a kind of master planning question.
Yeah.
But if we can accept one of those things, and they look kind of the same, I don't know why we can't accept the other one of those things. I mean, I, I kind of know in the back of my head already what some people might say, but for me at least, if I can accept one, I can accept the other.
Well, it's interesting you should say that because some communities I've worked in actually define apartments and hotels almost synonymously. So in a district you could do either a hotel or you could do apartments and, but it's just, it's the way language gets used, right, it's the way how they define things, but but I mean, just from a built form perspective, a hotel could easily be apartments, but but I mean, sometimes communities want to have a hotel for the tax revenue and they don't want the apartments for whatever reason, but, but, but as for built form and physical impact, it's the same.
I think it's going to be important to look at, you touched upon the housing conditions, to to also look at the people already in our community experiencing homeownership, but are maybe in, in older house. Because I'm not sure what that would look like, but I'd like to explore what that might look like.
Yeah, I agree.
They have a lot of old houses and I think potentially if someone in that house might be struggling, potentially keep that house up or keep it economical for them when they're burning, you know, X amount of number of oil tanks a year.
Yeah.
So I like the housing conditions idea.
Okay.
And I don't know much about the missing middle, I just know that there's something there that we talk, you know, talk about a couple of different ends of the spectrum, but that missing middle I think is really important for sustainability of the town as well.
Yeah.
Someone that's outside of the hundred percent.
I think we, I think this board has, our goal has been to talk about the missing middle and I think a lot of those conversations have been hijacked with fear mongering about affordable housing and it being income qualified.
Yeah.
And I, I think we should continue to re-center our focus on building.
I don't think the missing middle is like, I'm not referring to income qualified.
No, I, I'm not saying you are, I think in the past those conversations have turned into that.
Went down that, okay.
And I think we need to kind of refocus ourselves on, on serving kind of the bell curve of the income and, 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 you know, meeting the needs of most people.
Well, something that else happened last time was that we, we all kind of agreed, yes, we need more housing affordable. And then we had the conversation that single-family freestanding houses are just not affordable today, for like median income. And and it, it just kind of broke down there, like, we want single-family freestanding houses and we want affordable houses and we're just going to kind of bang our heads against the wall and and this is where I thought we talked to the public and I, and I thought there was a willingness to be a lot more flexible and I was curious about that and I think you talked to a lot of young people today, I don't know if it's out of desperation or just different ideals, but I think there's a lot more openness to a lot more options than we give people credit for.
Can I ask John a question?
Sure.
When you said, in terms of, bring it back to the community engagement question.
Yeah.
When you talked about taking a general barometer to begin, what does that mean, what's that actually look like?
One of our first big meetings we had at the elementary school.
Yeah.
In our little tiny seats.
Oh, I remember.
You were at that one. And, so if you remember, there were some kind of icebreaker questions and some kind of bigger broader questions about expectations and
I remember, what is standing, what is standing in the way of housing being affordable?
Yeah, like some, some big questions that just kind of can open up, open-ended discussion to see where it goes and what people self-identify as being the issues before we started kind of honing that into something much more specific.
Yeah, and it was focus group.
Yes, it was, and kind of roundtable discussions and and you were like, you were out there with the marker, like writing stuff down, right, on the big, on the big board.
Yes.
We're at the same table together. And, and I think that's a great place to start again, like kind of go right back to that beginning point again. And I imagine where we hone into for more in-depth follow-through, it's going to be different this time, I would hope.
Because I don't want to completely remake the wheel with what we did with the HOP grant either, but I also can get us, for me, it would personally be interesting to get a sense.
I think it would as well and I think for people on the outside, to have an event that can kind of re-acquaint with the whole process again, I think is also valuable.
Sure.
I wonder, actually, the timing of this. Is, and I know some of these events bring in more than just Plymouth, but I'm thinking there are summer events in and around the area like the Fun Fair and the concerts in the park, which are much smaller, but the Fun Fair is like huge, granted it pulls in from a bunch of communities.
Talking about the Bridge House Fair?
It's at the Bridge House, with the foam and all that kind of stuff?
Not at the Bridge House, it's at the Husky.
Covered Bridge.
Yeah, yeah. Fire department like makes these big.
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
At Husky, at Husky Field in the middle of the summer, there's always a Fun Fair and the fire department produces all this soap foam that the kids run through.
Kids, you say.
I do, I do as well.
Anyhow, it's a big event and I wonder if it would be valuable to even have a couple of us at a table at a couple of these events just to reach people we don't ordinarily reach.
Yeah.
So I sat at a table at the big yard sale.
I wish you didn't reach anybody.
And people were very focused on the yard sale and I didn't even.
Here's the thing about the Fun Fair, there are
So, they're going to a destination, they don't want to hear the housing. Let me tell you.
I've been to the Fun Fair with my family and as your kid is like jumping around for the fifteenth time in the bounce house or for the thirtieth time in the big pile of foam, you might get a little restless and want to talk to someone.
Good luck, I'm, I support you one hundred percent, John.
I'll go.
I'll make the copies for you if you want.
So, Joseph, I'm just, I'm having, having trouble open a couple of files on my computer, so I just got to go back to you. What is, what does the grant require or anticipate for community engagement?
Yeah, the, the grant actually did not this time require the town to submit a community engagement plan as a part of our application, they, they have asked us to put one together after getting the grant and in the first couple of months, so they actually, we didn't preemptively provide them with one, but they do want one from us, so I
You're calling it one of one in a certain timeframe rather, pretty soon.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think that's a key difference with this one, because we didn't necessarily promise we will do three open houses and sit at the Fun Fair and do a survey, we, we said, we will, I think genuinely, I think it was pretty broad and we said, we'll put together a broad community engagement plan that will, you know, build upon what we did in the previous round and I, I don't think we made specific representations, but certainly it's a requirement of the grant, that community engagement be a major part of whatever work you do.
What does the grant afford in terms of the amount of community engagement we could pay for?
Well, part, so it, there's two parts to that, you know, we have the contract with Barrett Planning and then we also have town community engagement and there really are two separate things under the grant, but they're, they should of course be really one effort. But the planning board, you know, having a planning board member sit at the Fun Fair and having Barrett Planning staff really put together and design a workshop. They're very different, different efforts and I think the town, we can, you know, the, the part that, you know, Judy probably can speak better than I can to how she envisions, you know, fitting the, the work plan with some of the, the bigger sort of consultant-led community engagement, but there's basically no limitations, no end to town-driven community engagement and hopefully that's all harmonized, that it all works together and, and isn't happening in isolation of each other.
You can do an engagement game at the fair and like give out a prize for people who score a certain thing.
Like with the dunk tank?
I was going to say, that sounded like Matt just volunteered to bring his bathing suit.
I wonder if that, I mean, so were you saying that you go to the Fun Fair and you try to get survey responses from people at the Fun Fair?
I did not say survey responses.
Or, or was it?
There are other ways of like talking to people.
Okay, I was also
That might be more fun than a survey.
Yeah.
Bring a nice visual, visually appealing board like we did at the community meetings are often a good thing.
It's like a little bit more game-like.
I do think that any outreach we, we have going forward, we should be able to highlight some of the things we've talked about, even if they haven't gone forward, so like having visuals of the, of the, the Fairgrounds overlay and the Tenny Mountain overlay as things we're still considering, like, what do you think about this? You know.
So, we have a couple of projects that have just organically become about, I think if we could use Blackie's picture of their thing, even those duplexes that are going to go on Texas Hill Road, if we could use stuff that's already, that's been approved and they're going to start working on, I think that's a bad idea to include that.
As a result of the zoning changes that have already gone, been approved.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, these, these, these projects happen because of the zoning amendment, zoning changes that happened as the first, as a result of the first round, so.
Just to show what can, what can be done.
I do think visualizing things for people is very helpful.
It is really helpful.
I think one of the challenges with the TMOD is that it's really hard to go from words to visuals and imagining what it could be and I understand, yeah, and I understand when people get freaked out because they can't go from here to there.
Especially when you don't know how many lots are over a hundred acres, how many lots are over two hundred fifty acres, you know, what can be, how can we visually represent those?
Would people in this community use an interactive project website if we created one, say if we had?
That's interesting.
Are you guys familiar with story maps where you can have?
Yeah.
We could do, it's basically a map of Plymouth and you have like questions for people and they can interact with the map, they can identify places on a map where they might have concerns or things where they might support.
On their own time.
Yeah, on their own time, it's asynchronous, yeah.
Have a computer at the public library that always has it up.
Because we, there are a couple of options we could do, I mean, one is we could do a story map.
Yeah.
But also we have a license now, which we did not have when we started working with you, for a community engagement platform called Social Pinpoint. And that's, it's just proven to be really helpful on a couple of other projects. So we could look at maybe using, setting up a a page on Social Pinpoint for, or license, you know, license this project.
It'd be attractive.
It'd be interactive, so, I mean, you can do all kinds of things, you can, you can link a story map to it, you can have a map in it, you can do surveys in it, you can keep people informed about the project, you can post ideas on it. I don't know how, if you guys are familiar with a tool called Mero.
Yes.
But, you know, it's a, it's almost like having a
Giant whiteboard.
Like a giant whiteboard and people can put Post-it notes up. Yeah, it's really cool and so you could link a Mero board to it, you could ask people a question like, you know, what would, you know, what would Plymouth be at its best if, with housing, like, how would, what would housing look like at its best for Plymouth? What would your concerns be, what would your wants be, what would your aspirations be for the future of housing in your community and they could just put Post-it notes up, they can't cancel somebody else's out.
Good, good.
Well, we, yeah, I have to, you actually have to set it up carefully.
That's a really good idea because I think people would do it on their own time and their own home.
That's what I'm thinking, we could, really, there's a lot of ways to use Social Pinpoint that even go beyond the story map. But we can talk about it internally at the office, if you think something like that would be useful here, we can do that.
I think so.
And then, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think absolutely and also I don't want to dismiss any like analog face-to-face stuff as well, because we do have many people who would not be very happy using a computer.
Oh, I agree, I'm not, and I'm not saying
Stay away from it, right?
Yeah, I mean
As an additional tool?
Yeah.
We don't have a huge budget for engagement, but we have enough that we could do some combination of of some type of community event and a supported page and then toward the end of the project, perhaps doing a second community meeting or something, a planning board meeting that would be open to the public or, I don't know, we could talk about it, but
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's a good idea.
What do you think, Michael?
I like to make a quick comment, I do a lot of web and social media development for local businesses around here and we have to take in consideration a lot of, a lot of a lot of, a lot of the folks are, just like we said, older generation, they're not on computers. Can you see Dean Yetman going on there? You putting all the stickers on there?
That helps him out, yeah.
I attended a meeting online once. He was on Top App, but.
His wife does it for him.
But I'm just saying, I had, I, for every um, social media site that I have to build, I have to obviously couple it to, you know, webpages and so on, and add manual systems out there, because the majority of the people, especially in the agricultural zone, on that computer literate.
Right.
They're on their trip, so we need to have some, I'm all about technology, twenty-first, but we have to have something for.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not saying it's in lieu of, I'm saying it's in addition to, and, you know, in terms of supporting, um, you know, older people, there are things we've done in other communities with, like the local council on aging, or senior center, or the library or something, where if there's a computer, then if there are computers at the library, then there's usually a library staff member who's computer literate enough to help people who may need support. So I respect what you're saying, um, I, I think it's probably surmountable, but yeah, you, you wouldn't want to just do the whole thing, uh, you know, with the consulting firm down in Hingham, Massachusetts.
That'd be a huge miss, Chris, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that, anyway.
I, I, I was wondering if, given the limited budget this time around, like everybody on HOP, obviously.
Yeah, this budget's crazy.
Um, and it's across the board, it's not just.
I shouldn't even be here, all right? I should not even be here, this is nuts.
Given that fact, um, let's say the town of Plymouth decided, we need another engagement session. We're, we're not gonna call, like you and Alexis to be here with your visuals to facilitate the whole thing. Um, would you be willing to provide us with some limited support to run our own engagement session?
Sure.
Um, as part of this project?
Yeah, of course I would.
I mean, I, I, I could see that scenario where you might not have it, your capacity within the budget to do that, but we might want to do it anyway, because it's important.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming, like, if you wanted to do, say, something like a, a community event, you wanted to do a booth, and you wanted materials for the booth, you know, a board where people could put dots up or something, we can do all of that stuff. Um, do you have a local print shop around here that we could send materials to? So, that's easy, we've done that a lot. Yeah, don't even, don't even worry about that, that's an easy ask.
I just want to keep that on the table as an option.
That's an easy ask.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna keep going through that last plan in the minutes that Joseph sent, which was really helpful, just to get a, your last meeting where you talked about the master plan. Cause I see this document probably coming up with some recommendations on its own, but then also maybe some suggestions for when you update the rest of the master plan, these are things you're probably gonna want to talk about. Um, I want to try to stay in my lane, but you know, your whole goal of a master plan is to try to have things integrated, so you don't have recommendations going off in different directions. So if I see something in there that seems like maybe you want to rethink it.
That would be great.
Too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because things change in eight years, they most certainly do, that's why you gotta keep these things up to date, so.
Especially if a pandemic happens.
Oh, God, yes, that's the other issue.
That's great, thank you, Judy.
Not a problem at all.
Can I ask you a, a quick question? So, if I recall, I think, so this is about timing for master planning, so I, I think the 2018 master plan started, they started laying out the groundwork in 2015.
Well, they probably did, right.
So, we should actually be thinking about starting to lay that groundwork now.
And we have mentioned it.
Yeah.
Talked about it the last meeting, too.
Okay, I'm, I apologize if.
No, don't.
But I, as long as we're all on the same page, I think.
But it has to keep getting brought up, because things get in the way, and we, then where it's November and.
To do this, we don't, we don't want it to be rushed, we want it to be well thought out.
And if we came out with a master plan in 2029 rather than 2028.
It's not the end of the world.
It's not the end of the world, um, we're still doing better than.
Right.
So you should think about if in sort of the branding of this project, for lack of a better word, if you want to be getting people to think about setting a stage for the master plan update.
This is just one chapter of it, right?
Huh?
This is just one chapter.
This is a chapter.
We're gonna have to do the rest of it soon.
It's a sort of, you know, planning board's beginning to think about updating the master plan. Here's our first, putting our toes in the water or something, you know.
With the topic that's all, that's relevant to everyone and familiar, because we've been working on it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Did you say anything else you need from us right now?
No, I think I'm probably good.
So nice to see you again.
I'm just, I'm so, it's so, I'm so happy to be here, you have no idea. I didn't want to come in on.
Especially after a four-hour drive.
That was crazy staying here tonight, right? You're not driving back. Oh, yeah, I, I just, I don't want to go back, it's too hard.
If I could just say one thing, um, to go back to the Tenny Mountain thing, um, one of the things that I saw happening when we started making those last-minute changes was the danger that if we didn't allow for housing outside of the core.
Yeah.
Um, what they would come back to us with is first a subdivision, in which they pulled out a whole bunch of pieces of their property to build housing on, and then a separate master plan for a, um.
Planned unit development.
Planned unit development, and.
But if they do that.
That's basically where they were going.
They have to have enough acreage to keep two hundred fifty acres.
Do not ever let a proponent threaten you, don't do it.
Yeah, that's what I just.
I, I was.
John, don't. Sorry.
We were just thinking about the logistics, because there, there are already holes in there.
I, I just didn't want, I really didn't want to see like a major subdivision coming out of this, as opposed to a planned unit development.
Okay, but if, if the underlying zoning is ag.
Which we just, off to the density and.
I understand that, but I mean, they can do that anyway.
They could.
They can.
I, I'd love to see them tie it into a pud though.
Understood.
Yeah.
But they can do that housing in the underlying zoning.
They can.
So. Sorry, well, it's not my place to criticize, and I don't mean to.
Well, I mean, I, I appreciate it.
I'm trying to give you permission to say.
No.
It was a.
This is not what we're coming forward with this year, applicant. If you think you can, want to come back next year with some changes, we're happy to consider it. You guys put so much work into some of this stuff, you know, there's always going to be second guessing, there's always going to be somebody who's got some better idea, and I don't, I, I mean, just for me, it's not a pride of authorship issue. If somebody comes up with a better idea, I'm always game for it, but it shouldn't happen like that.
No, no.
I felt very badly for all of you.
Well, it worked out, so here we are, now we're moving forward.
Yeah, that's true. Do you have anything else on your agenda tonight?
We do.
Yes.
You do.
I'd like to stick around.
R S A one fifty-five E.
Seeing it gravel.
And actually, we have something, we have something before that, too.
Oh, yeah.
Priorities of the board for 2025.
Oh.
Oh, interesting.
Well, yeah, I actually probably have some other work I could do then.
Oh, perfect.
If you want me to stay, I will.
We appreciate your attendance to this point, thank you. No need to stay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for making the trip up.
I'm happy, really, I was so happy to come here. I was not happy with the traffic coming through Boston. Ugh, jeez.
I went down on Tuesday.
Four hours, can you imagine that?
I believe it'll be better on the way home.
Yeah, that's crazy. Ridiculous, anyway.
Thank you.
Again, it's good weather does.
Pleasure seeing you.
It was, it was so beautiful out, oh my God, so beautiful. You people who are dressed like winter. Not me.
Not me, I got my shorts out and that's it.
I have put everything away, I don't.
If we didn't have winter, we would be overrun with even more retirees.
Oh, stop.
Um, it's serious, like, winter's the only thing that keeps us from turning into Florida.
Let's not go there.
God forbid.
Well.
The fact that I know it's still gonna freeze is why my tomato seedlings are still inside.
Yeah.
So when sea level rise and climate change destroy the state of Florida, where do you think everybody's gonna be coming?
Right up here, baby.
We're gonna send them to Arizona.
South, South Carolina.
Georgia.
Yeah.
Canada.
Fifty-first state.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little, little, uh, obstacle course.
Thank you again, have a good night.
Thanks, Judy.
Take care, guys.
Take care. Thank you, Judy.
Okay, Matt.
Good conversations.
Very good.
This is a good board.
So, moving on to the next thing on the agenda, is discussing what, sort of a new, new idea, if you will, discussing what we want to prioritize on the board for the year, so we can, and it doesn't need to be something we finalize tonight, but something that sooner than later, we can sort of make it be known to the public, hey, these are the things we're gonna be working on this year, we're gonna be, and these are just examples, not saying this is, is or isn't it. We're gonna be revisiting the Tenny Mountain Overlay District, we're gonna be revisiting Fairgrounds Road, we're gonna be revisiting commercial use table in the ag zone, um, you know, just several different things, so we sort of want to think about out laying out a list of what that looks like for this year, because it's a busy year with all the state legislative things possibly coming through, the housing master plan, the master plan itself, you know, starting to fire up a little bit.
The state legislative stuff won't hit us, and like, it's usually effective at a later date, but it, we'll, we'll want to be aware of it.
Usually towards the end of the summer, right?
Yeah, and we'll just have to keep our eye on what passes. I did include, and I don't want to cut you off, Matt, I can touch on it later.
Our spiel has been said, so.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's important to keep our eye on it. There are, you know, the first of these bills that, they're, they're, they're working their way through the legislative process as they do, um, and, you know, ma, thi- this year, different from some other years, a lot of the direct zoning preemption bills are advancing through both chambers, so we saw the first one approved. Actually, it was uh, today, I think, by the House that had previously been approved by the Senate, so of course, under our system of government, approved by either the House or the Senate, and it goes to the other, that body approves it, then they reconcile their versions, it goes to the governor for signature or veto, um, and of course, the state gives us the authority to plan in-zone, they do also have the authority to limit how we can plan in-zone, and there are, there are several bills to that effect um, that are currently in the legislature. The one that has, at this point, passed both the House and the Senate, likely to be reconciled. Of course, we don't know, obviously, if it'll be signed, so I don't want to take up too much of the board's time with it, but just for the board to be aware in their planning that we, we have to comply with these, um, you know, otherwise, if, if we don't, we're, we're out of compliance with state law, um, and, and we really can't do that, even if we don't update our zoning to, to address that issue, uh, folks could just easily bypass our zoning by, by, you know, saying we're, we're in violation of, of state law, so they include uh, things like how much parking can be required for residential uses, uh, what lot sizes towns are able to require, um, requiring uh, commercial use or residential uses be allowed in commercial zones, there are a couple that relate to class six roads, and there are a couple that have a, that are singular bills that lump together a, a large number of uh, limitations on individual zoning restrictions, there's also another one that is likely to um, require uh, manufactured housing be allowed by right, um, on, on any uh, lot that allows single-family housing, so there, there's a lot of breadth of bills this year, and, and differently from some other years, a lot of the zoning preemptions, preemptions of the past haven't really passed the chambers, you know, their respective chambers, they might pass one, but not the other, uh, if they even make it out of committee. But, but this year, they, they, they are moving forward pretty rapidly, whether they end up getting signed, we, we don't know, and so, but just for the board to be aware that, even if, even though these are, are kind of being dictated down to us from the state, uh, when the board is making its plan for the year, we'll want to keep in mind that there could be a, a significant amount of uh, capacity that needs to go to figuring out how we want to comply with some of these mandates, because they tell us in general, what we cannot do, um, but they don't prescribe how exactly we have to not do that thing, so there might be many ways to, say, respond to a particular uh, piece of legislation, and I do think that's important to keep it in mind. Again, we can get into specifics if people have questions about specifics, but none of them have actually been signed into law yet, um, so, so we can kind of also just keep it on the back burner, but just, just to make the board aware, um, this, this could be something that, once these bills really are uh, making it through the process, um, there, there is a, there's a pretty decent probability that I would, I would ballpark up to five to eight uh, zoning changes would be, would be necessary, if, if all of the ones that have passed one of the two chambers.
It, it's worth noting that there are more bills than usual that contradict one another. And.
Noted.
And there's one that would potentially have planning boards looking at, um, um, building permits, among other things, and basically totally rewriting what a planning board is, and I don't think it was on purpose, but.
It wasn't, it, it, yeah, it's a, it, yeah, I.
I don't want to look at building permits.
It's, well, and I, I think, I think it's our.
My piece in lawsuits.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to wade into that one too much, because it may still change, but it, it's, it, it essentially, that bill you're referring to, John, it, it has, for the, it says for the purposes of this newly created section, planning board shall be defined as a board that approves site plans and building permits, which there is no such board in the state of New Hampshire that approves both site plans and building permits.
Yes.
So it, 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 that, yeah, I didn't want to get into that one too much, but it, you could argue that it doesn't apply to any boards, because there are no such.
It speaks to the knowledge of our legislature.
Let's not waste our time too much on this one.
Yeah. May I just.
Disparaging the legislature is not gonna get us nowhere.
Hilarious.
I do think that it, it could be a good priority for us, though, to keep an eye on this and be ready to, as Joseph noted, we have still a certain amount of power and leeway to write the legislation in a way that makes best sense for Plymouth, once slash if it does go through. So I think kind of being on our toes for that might be a wise choice for us as a board, because I think it'll take some work.
These, these changes, I mean, we've had these come through recently, like, up, up until a few years ago, accessory dwelling units could only be inhabited by direct family, and we had to change that to allow anyone, so like, you know, we, we adapt.
There is a bill that also addresses the issue of related people in a.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, I didn't mention that one, but that is a good point, and that would, that would be one that we.
We have to change ours.
Another, another area where we would have to make a change, and.
Yeah.
If we decided something we want to regulate.
No, no, that would mandate we change it.
Then we'd change our zoning to loosen that.
Correct.
And then we'd have to decide if we want to put other workarounds in to regulate it back down.
Yeah, and I think that one seems pretty, yeah, yeah, that one seems pretty, um, you know, of all of them, I think that one uh, probably is, is the least flexibility in how we would address that, because it's a pretty direct preemption that you can't um, differentiate between whether a unit is occupied by a, a family of people who are related or a group of unrelated occupants, and, and that's a pretty, it's, it's a pretty broad restriction against doing that, if that bill were to, were to go into effect, so we'd pretty much just have to, that one, we don't have a lot of area gray, we just have to kind of strike where we, where we do that.
Perfect.
Potentially, potentially.
So looking at a, thinking about what we want to prioritize for this year, setting aside the state legislation stuff, because that we're gonna, that is coming, you know.
Yes.
Please fix it before it gets to.
Yeah, right, please fix before it gets to.
Right.
Um, does anyone have any ideas, you know, Tenny Mountain Overlay, Fairgrounds Overlay, commercial use in the ag zone, I think with size taking into account. Um, we're gonna talk in a minute about one fifty-five E, so we'll hold off on that for a second. Um, but anything else that we've either worked upon in the last year, or needs, needs attention anyways, that someone can think of that, you know, we want to, would like us to look at for the rest of this year?
One of the things I'd like to propose is that, you know, in, in our consideration of commercial uses in the ag zone, we should be, we should be willing to look at our, our, what we, how we define home, home businesses, because that could be loosened to allow for more flexibility.
Yeah.
And that would. That's a good way, that's a potentially good way to go about that.
You know, I think, I think our, our home business, our, our, our regulation or allowance for, you know, home-based businesses could be expanded to allow for some external uses as well, and I think that, I think a lot of towns have more flexibility than we do when we come to that.
That's an interesting proposal.
I would also add, um, another alternative to changing the use table is to add our own special exception criteria to the current special exception criteria.
Sure. What do you mean by that?
Just, yeah.
So there are just standard default special exception criteria.
Yeah.
Um, the planning board in writing, and then the people in passing, a zoning, um, can also add um, additional specific special exception criteria for specific special exceptions that, um, you ask for. So instead of the saying, go to the zoning board and get a special exception, we could say, and these are the specific um, criteria, either for these uses or for anything in the ag zone, or whatever it might be, might be another[1792.01] Might be another different angle than changing the use table to think about ways of specifying what does and doesn't work. I'm not sure it is the right way, but it might just be good to keep on the table.
Yep, another idea, in those forms of. In the form you're discussing, does someone, would someone entity, if you will, still go in front of the zoning board for a special exception?
Yes.
Then, whatever the, and then the planning board for a special exception as well, just a more specific one.
Not to the planning.
It would just be, it would just, when the when the zoning board looked at the special exception, they'd have different criteria than just the ones they standardly see. That that you could write specifically for um all the uses in the ag zone that are special exceptions or specific ones. Whatever it might be, I mean, it could be, you can specify that, but you're you're allowed to add extra special exception criteria, yeah.
That confused you, except for when you first asked, wait, they're going for one in front of us, too.
No, 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 it's it's just more more guidance for the zoning board when they're looking at it.
Yep, alright.
That's another, it's another angle to 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 keep in mind. I would also just remind us, and I'm not sure. If they're gonna be ready for this yet, and maybe we just put this off for another year again, um, there's the ESC, and we're doing the new NRI. And we were talking about holding off on the ESC until the new NRI is done.
Yeah.
And we can think of the more fun acronym to put put in there, um, but.
Can you state those words?
Yeah, yeah, let's explain it to the people.
For people listening, now or in the future?
Yes, or online, right, um, so the ESC is the environmentally sensitive zone, which is in our zoning ordinance. Which regulates before we had the Shoreline Protection Act in the state, um, but it'll also add some additional coverage. Above and beyond what the Shoreline Protection Act offers, uh but it's also, it could be better written, let's say. Than it currently is, and so there's been discussion over the past several years about whether we should A, just remove it. Or B, write something better in its place, informed by the Conservation Commission. And potentially the NRI, the National Resources Inventory, which they are currently working on, and we're funded at town meeting to work on.
Yep, thank you.
Um, do we have update updates on the NRI? I will ask this probably every month. Does anyone know?
I don't think yet.
So do you want that one defined as well?
The Natural Resources Inventory, yes.
And and that the Conservation Commission is charged with.
Yes, I'm aware of that, I don't know if there's been any.
Just just for ju- public knowledge, I guess.
They're working on it.
And it becomes, it it becomes a tool, it will be great to have when we write, it it can be a resource for us when we write the the master plan. And it should be a resource for us anytime we're thinking about zoning.
Including the environmentally sensitive zone.
Yeah.
So probably not this year yet, I imagine, but.
Depends on the timing of the the report, I think.
We'll see, I guess.
We'll see.
I I don't think there's a harm in leaving the environmentally sensitive zone alone until we have better information.
Which is why we haven't done anything yet.
Right, becau- I mean, uh basically, everything that it affects is already subject to the the Shoreline Protection Act. The environmentally sensitive zone is five hundred feet, shoreline protection is two fifty, so. It's kind of, there's double protection now, and the the town is more more strict on how far out it goes, but. We, you know, I think there's potential we might, yeah, we could do it in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not not to say it's not worth it, I I just don't think, we're gonna have very, we're gonna have more information soon.
Talking priorities.
Yeah.
I agree.
It can wait, yeah.
Any other, Sue?
Um, no, I I think I might come up with something, but I, later.
Okay.
But, um, I think this is a pretty good list with um all the government stuff as well that could potentially be there, but.
Yeah.
I think it's a good starting point, and it's something we can get out to the public, to let them know that what we're gonna be working on for more input.
Um, in terms of master plan, aside from the housing chapter, is there stuff that we need to think about doing this year as well? Or can we just stick with the housing chapter as our kind of entry point?
Well, we should be thinking about how much money we need, like, we we should be requesting a budget allocation in the upcoming budget. And I don't know if it's sufficient enough to go into the CIP or not.
We have a placeholder for it in the CIP, that's about forty to fifty thousand.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, we we may be contracting with somebody to write this for us.
Okay, so we we typically contract someone to help us write the master.
Say we may, I think we should.
I, we should, I agree.
So we have to do a search and everything as well?
Yeah, we're planning a budget, we should probably do an RFP.
Yeah, okay.
And seek a qualified firm that would help us with that.
And Judy's gonna be making some, she's gonna read through it, too, and she's gonna make some recommendations as well, so.
At the RFP?
But there, I mean, there are a lot of good planners in the area.
Yes.
You may not wanna work directly in the community.
And that's okay.
Yes, yeah.
And there's also the Regional Planning Commission, they often do.
Which has gotten back into master planning and stuff now, which I kind of were out of for a while.
When I did, the last time I did a town master plan, we relied on our Regional Planning Commission to write it, but they they, you know. That might be something where they would very much appreciate support if they're not getting support from the state budget.
So if, is writing an RFP a priority for twenty twenty-five?
I would say so.
Yeah, that would probably be, yeah, identification of a of a partner to.
So writing RFP and.
Selection of a.
Selection of a.
In twenty-six, we can kind of get the process rolling.
Yeah.
Joseph, what are your concerns and, um. What are your ideas on twenty twenty-five for the planning process, you know, looking forward into the master plan?
Yeah, I think I think you, you know, correctly identified, I mean, one one key thing is how much we wanna overlap the housing master plan process. With the rest of the the upcoming master plan process, so if theoretically, we have Judy Barrett under contract. Until like the middle of next year for the housing master plan work, so it it, but, you know, things, things come fast. So if we wanted to really, starting in the summer of next year, be working on the master plan, as you said, we would really need to be getting that in the budget. This year, and then we could theoretically be looking at consultants this year, we don't necessarily have to do it in that order. But I I think that is something that if we really wanna pick that up as soon as Judy finishes or is wrapping up. This housing master plan work, um, summer of next year is is a time that that will probably be completed by. Um.
So the, does the, our RFP would probably need to include some sort of budget, but if we don't have a budget.
Yeah, it's.
Solidified.
You can do it either way, I mean, you can do an RFP or or a RFQ, we could do an RFQ. Uh, and get a list of qualified firms and choose based on the qualifications of the firm.
RFQs request for.
Qualifications, yep, and then a firm would submit more information about their qualifications, but it wouldn't be a.
A full proposal, yeah.
Because it doesn't have that uh information about cost, I mean, I, consultants prefer RFP from what I hear out in the field. Because they know the scope that they're trying to propose a project for, because they know the budget.
Yeah.
They they like to bid to a number rather than make a big proposal and then not really know what scale they're going to be working with. But you could do either.
Probably one of the things you and or Avery could do, I imagine, would be to look at. Other projects, master plan projects in the last couple of years for similarly sized towns. That might match our scope and see what they went for and get get a range.
Sure.
Um, that might be helpful.
Yeah, and I have a, I did get a quote when we were doing the CIP last year from LRPC, just a sort of high level for. Long-term planning purposes, and I think that it really, I I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it was the forty to fifty thousand range. For a vision, land use and implementation chapter done by the RPC, now a private consultant. I I don't know what that number would come in at.
It would be higher, but probably a bit more thorough as well.
I would think that's probably a fair assessment, and I think the other thing like that the board would wanna think about is, usually you have. A, sometimes, shouldn't say usually, it it depends, up to the board, you'd often designate a subcommittee. That would maybe a a few people who would review uh the qualification statements, perhaps have one or more interviews. And then make recommendations back to the full board to make a decision, that's how, you know, we did back in two thousand and six. When we we chose KV Partners as the board's engineer, it's really a similar process, but the board could do interviews at a. Full planning board meeting and review the statements, but sometimes having a a subcommittee to to review them and make a recommendation. Or potentially multiple recommendations to the board could be a way to uh do it more quickly. That that's that's one of many possible uh options.
Are there typically grants available?
Not lately for master plan work that isn't tied to housing that we've seen, there used to be the MTAG grant from New Hampshire. Housing, and I think some other partners got involved in that, but that uh was, they they couldn't continue to offer that. While they were also managing the HOP grant program, so my understanding is that all planning funds and all of the apparatus to fund planning work. Really is rolled in, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, it's rolled into the HOP program, and we've certainly taken advantage of a lot of that, but. I'm not aware of anything, you know, we could look, there's always, there's always potential private, I mean, private foundations, private donations could. Could sometimes help offset if we wanna get something extra.
But I'm not fully understanding, do, for the master plan for hiring somebody, the, does that go into our budget? That will be voted on in March of twenty twenty-six, or is there already something in the capital improvement, like is it coming just from the town budget now?
No, there's nothing, well, it's a placeholder in capital in the CIP, but it does not have any funds associated with it yet, there's no capital reserve for it. We would probably need to do it as a warrant article, typically a big one-time purchase like that, we would, eh, we would kind of owe it to the voters. To to do that as a warrant article.
Yeah.
Um, and then it would be on us to make the case to the voters that us being, you know, the town.
It's a worthy worthwhile investment.
Yeah, and then, you know, it would have to succeed or fail at town meeting, uh but ideally, you want that to be an accurate number. You don't have to come back next year and say, sorry, we, you know, got the number wrong and we need to come back, so it is, it's good to be to be a little thorough.
At the same time, you wanna put enough in, you don't wanna overspend, not stuff we don't need, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that we're not, you know. Running out of funds in the in the process and leaving the, you know, the last couple chapters to the planning board to write.
And you could also do an option.
Could be an outcome, right, it it could lead the publishing like, oh, we we didn't budget enough for this, and we're either gonna have to do it ourselves or. Come up with another.
So is it the type of thing that we, when we write an RFP, we ask for the proposers to submit their, their.
Proposal.
Their idea of the budget?
Usually with an RFP.
Do we need to say this is the money we have?
Usually with an RFP, we give them the the amount of money, with an RFQ, it's very flexible, we don't usually have an amount. So that that could be the advantage of doing an RFQ, is that we can say.
Even if you do an RFQ, you still typically have to negotiate a contract after you select the vendor, whereas an RFP is usually. They, there's a price associated with that, you know what their, what the cost is gonna be where, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just seeing the kind of tough, we don't, we, the timeline is a little off.
And the other thing we could do is put something in, uh, you know, for the budget, put it on the warrant. And then, depending on contingent on that getting approval, we could move into the RFP phase, as long as we've gotten. Maybe if we get some quotes before, rough ideas, informal, and then we put something, in case it gets amended at town meeting or.
Right.
You know, if something were to happen where our amount changes, we could hit the ground running and say, we've actually been allocated this amount. Submit your scope, what you can do for this amount, I mean, that's the other, the other way.
And if we do wanna get estimates, it would be helpful to have some sense from the board of just what it is we wanna accomplish.
Right.
Right, so there's a little bit, it has to how it'll happen at the same time, you have to start writing an RFP to start getting an idea of a quote, to start be able to. Submit something to the town.
But we can probably look at, you know, what other towns in the area have done recently, and you know, were they starting from the same place? Or were they, were, you know, were they, were they updating a thirty-year-old master plan, or were they updating a ten-year-old master plan, you know? You know, the 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 work we've done on the history and the background, it needs to be updated a little bit, but there's a lot of information in our current master plan. You know, it's good to update, you know, oh, I think I, I think the thing that that I find valuable in the master plan is. Is the public perceptions, and and when we survey people, you know, what survey responses are about, like, what's important, how should we, you know, what. What should the the focus of this area be, what should the focus of this area be, you know, and cuz I mean, populations change. I mean, I, when I think about who lived here ten years ago when I moved here, it's different than now, and and everybody's entitled to their. Perspective on what their vision for Plymouth should be.
And I think we should also think about, which comes down to who we end up choosing as a consultant. What our vision for what a master plan looks like should be, there's been a lot of discussion in the last several years about ma- making master plans. That look quite different from what they used to look like, um, in terms of shoving some of the data analysis into an appendix or something. That nobody's really gonna read for the most part, um, and if they want to, they can look in the appendix, um, but making the core of the master plan. Shorter and more readable.
Yeah.
And more narrative, and there's an argument for and against that.
Yeah.
But it, we should, we should at least have a sense as a board, I would say, like, which direction do we wanna go with some of those trends?
Little precedent study.
Right.
Yeah.
It might be good to do some homework and actually look at a few master plans that are not our own.
Well, you got one?
Well, does any, before we move on.
I do have a, I do have a, uh, something to throw in on priorities, and maybe I can make it softer by saying, we don't have to do our say one fifty-five E tonight. That could be part of this, that's, this could be part of the priorities discussion, um, you know, I I had brought it up. In our discussion with the select board, cuz I wasn't sure where the town was on this, but I, similarly, I think the town should be looking at. Potentially writing our own wetlands ordinance to to include in the zoning ordinance, um, as a subsection of the zoning ordinance, and. Um, my my reason for that is that s- state funding is always a challenge, and we rely on the state to enforce wetlands violations. If we have something in our own zoning ordinance, the town can enforce it. You know, I I think we all res- I think we all respect water quality and understand the importance of protecting it, but I don't think we should. Looking forward, the way the state's been going, I don't think we should rely exclusively on the state for enforcement, and I think that unless we have. A town wetlands ordinance, we can, we don't have the ability to do that ourselves.
So understanding that and understand we don't need to decide tonight.
Yes, just throwing it in as as a, some as something to consider for for priorities.
I think I agree with you in principle, um, I wonder how much capacity would we would need in the town to actually take care of that work? And I guess it depends on how diligent we wanna be, but I was kinda curious about that.
Some sometimes it's not, I mean, sometimes it it it's something that developers, it helps them, because they can say, well, here's. Here's the state requirement, but like, when we provide the hotel expansion for Riverside Landing, we know that like the town wants us to do this. In addition to what the state wants them to do there, and and you know, I was somewhat surprised to see how that played out when they did that scope, but.
Well, I I was thinking especially on the, you mentioned the um, kind of, on the enforcement side.
Yeah, well, in in enforcement is one thing, but like having, having a plan gives engineers something to design to as well.
Well, this this is always like the case in a good, well-written zoning ordinance, but I was really curious about capacity. Because of the other part that you mentioned, which is the actual enforcement side.
Enforcement is always up to the select board, and it can be, I mean, if it's in the zoning ordinance, then the town code enforcement officer has the authority to enforce that.
Yeah.
I mean, they might have to rely on a wetland scientist or soil scientist to to do some consulting on that, but. We have those in town, too.
In principle, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, uh, since we were talking about wetlands, should we move on to one fifty-five?
Can I mention one, just to just to follow up on your comment, and I don't, so, I'll just sort of bring this back around to. You mentioned, uh, Tom Newcomb, code officer, did last year, late last year, approached the board, asking if the board was interested in tackling. Writing regulations for short-term rentals, I don't know.
They should keep that on our priority list.
Yeah, I wanted to throw that back and see where the board felt, if that's something that they wanna tackle this year, or where the board stands on it, it's a, it's a. Complex issue, there's a lot of nuance to it, it's really, it's really a lot of ways we could go, but, um, I just wanted to at least mention that.
Judy, where are you?
I kinda wanted to see where it went.
This is directly housing-related in some ways, it it might be interesting to have that as part of our engagement to see how the community feels.
Yeah.
There's a lot of issues with short-term rentals.
Yeah.
There was the accessory dwelling unit concern Tom had last year as well.
Yes.
Joseph, do you know how the like shakedown is going on the like various court cases that have.
Yeah.
Been pending the last few years?
Yeah, so.
Like, is is there clarity at this point to actually move forward in a meaningful way with writing a zoning ordinance around short-term rentals? If we wanted to do so, or or is it still all up in the air?
I would say it's not all up in the air, I mean, things can change quickly, I would say the Conway case, that's kind of been the the big one. Um, and I and I think our current zoning is. Um, and I and I think our current zoning is actually an example of that where the way that we currently treat short term rentals and that we. Don't really treat them very directly, but but we kind of do by the virtue of the way our definitions are written, uh regulate them. Um, actually stands up to the to the standard that's been kind of established in Conway and what that case I think really, really. Emphasized, those you have to be incredibly thoughtful as a community with a zoning ordinance about how you write definitions. And I I think that's the biggest takeaway, you know, of 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 that case. Because it, as I understand it, it it did get resolved and that the Conway was. Um, basically, they didn't have the the authority to enforce it in the way they were trying to because their definition. Of a dwelling unit was so broad that it it should have included short term rental type uses, whereas. I I would co- contrast that with Plymouth's definition of dwelling unit, which really clearly does not include. Uh, short term rentals and I think that's.
Transient uses or whatever.
Right, it specifically says a dwelling unit is for non transient residential purposes and I I think that's. I think that's the take home message, I I can find more uh resources on that if the board would like.
You have legal opinion.
There's been a lot that's come out and I can certainly share some with the board for sure, uh there've been some some. Good pieces written about it lately and then. You know, but the other side of it is. If the board wanted to regulate it or plow it, there are. Short term rental is a very broad term, right, it it can mean so many different things, does it include? Campground, does it include a freestanding cabin in a backyard, is it a homestay where someone leases a room in a private home? Is it an accessory dwelling unit that's rented out on a night to night basis, I mean, is it a hotel, really? You've got to be really thoughtful about what exactly you're talking about in any of these regulations and.
We still have rooming house in our zoning ordinance too, right, which is like.
We have several active rooming houses in town, yeah.
We still have the houses in town too.
Yeah.
Plymouth had numerous rooming houses.
Yeah, we do, we've got a couple that are active.
It was interesting what Conway was trying to do, which was they were really trying to tie short term rentals to owner occupancy. Which.
Like New York City.
Which as a lot of places say like, i- if you tie to owner occupancy, you're less likely to A burden the housing market. And you're less likely to B have problems like. We heard about from Tom, like people walking around one another's property like. That's less likely to happen in an owner occupied unit. Um, however you find owner occupied, it's less likely to happen. Um, and I think that's what Conway was going for and then like botched the writing of it. Um, but to to me, that makes a lot of sense.
It does, yeah.
As an intent at least, if Conway didn't do it right, but they, the intent, I think was a good one.
I do think you get a lot, I do think you'd hear a lot from the community. In terms of feedback on that if.
Yeah, that would be, it would be really interesting to hear.
We should definitely have that as a discussion topic with the housing chapter. Any other topics of discussion for twenty twenty five that anyone could think of at the moment?
The campground regulation?
Yeah, I did, yeah, so campgrounds are always one that, you know, are worth thinking about.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
True, right, we, no, campgrounds, yeah, they, so it's it's not as prevalent as it once was. But there was a period of time in which our office was getting almost multiple times a week. Questions about, I would like to build a campground in Plymouth.
Two and a half years ago roughly.
Right, right about.
Interesting.
And so it it is true, we do not define campgrounds in our zoning ordinance, we do have hotel motel. What is the line between a campground and a hotel motel, that can be a little fuzzy, but just a. You know, if someone wanted to put tent sites with a shared toilet, um on a piece of rural land. That's not allowed under our current zoning. Some of these glamping type uses, you know, whether they're domes or whether they're yurts or something like that. Might actually fit the definition of a hotel as opposed to a campground if there are structures. Um, and there are enough of them, but not all the time, so some regulation of campground or or some clarity that. If the if the town wanted to allow tent camping or RV parks in a in a more. You know, there are regulations out there, but they're, they can be a little cumbersome, so.
About tiny houses.
Well, and that's that's the key question of what do we define? Yeah, so I I mean, a tiny house, right, we don't have a minimum square footage of a house, so if someone wanted to build a single family home, that's. As long as it meets building code, there's no specific minimum square footage we impose, but. A lot of tiny homes as we hear them described are off actually more of a RV as defined under zoning, if it's really a. Has a trailer hitch and is on wheels, um so those would fall under how we regulate RVs.
Alternatively, they fall under the more permanent kind of cottage cluster. Or even OSRD where they're kind of tightly clustered together.
Or manufactured housing, depending on the size and configuration and whether they, you know, the the whether the chassis is more of a. A trailer versus a a.
Frame.
Frame, so it it, there's a lot of nuance, it's a good, it's a good question, there's a lot of nuance to it.
That's something Tom would know all the specifics.
Yep, yep, and I'm sure we, you know, we get questions about those too and I, what we always have to say is it really. You know, it really does depend on what you mean when you say short, uh tiny house.
If you just wanted to do tiny houses as a legally defined house in this town. And put them close together, you could do it, um. The current thing we're seeing, which is the.
Conditional use permit.
The the conditional use permit for the um colocation.
Yep.
Um, you could also do it as a cluster development within the OSRD. Um, if you had the open space to provide for it. Um, or we can go Dover style and do a transfer development rights for open space. Which we do not allow.
We do not currently have any provision for that, of course, that is a possibility.
Not sure we'd want to, but um.
Sure either, it would be a big, it would be a big conver- so transfer development rights would be a big conversation topic, I mean. Towns certainly have the right to to implement those schemes and, you know, there's no reason town like Plymouth couldn't consider it, but it would be a very. Substantial topic of conversation, basically allowing someone to. Uh, it, you know, if you have a one hundred acre piece of land in a certain part of town that you'd rather see that part of town more preserved. And you have a smaller piece of land in a part of town that you're more favorable to seeing developed. You can sort of transfer the development potential from that large rural piece of land to that other piece of land, build more densely. More intensely on smaller lots, kind of like an OSRD, except your open space is not contiguous and then some towns like Dover. Have gone an extra step where instead of actually conserving land in this other part of town. You actually pay to the conservation commission a certain value of of dollar contribution. That they then use to acquire conservation land at some point in the future to allow you greater density, so it's like a extension of an OSRD. That allows for balance, you know, you you want to see conservation land here and development here. How do you shift the development from here to there while still keeping economic value in both?
It's also the urban version, which is not very helpful in Plymouth probably. You you give up like air rights on stories on one building, so you can add them to another building.
Conceptually.
Yeah, that's getting a little much for Plymouth right now. Talk to us in twenty years. I'll be gone.
I I think they're very interesting.
I apologize for bringing up campgrounds.
It's a, it's a, it's a perennial topic and we don't hear about it as much as we did, but tho- those, that that time period, really twenty twenty one. Timeframe, it was everybody who, every other phone call was someone wanting to build a campground and. The answer is actually quite complicated, that's the way that you can do that.
Was it Mr. Carter down at the, was that his name?
That was after that, actually.
Yeah, that was, that was prior to to this.
DES has regulations on it.
Exactly.
Was this like a vacation, like everyone was coming up to New Hampshire to, yeah, because COVID, yeah, okay, yeah.
DES is really strict on campgrounds.
And we would really want to include DES.
Well, I kind of feel the same way I did a couple of years ago when this came up and like, nah. This is me.
I don't know if it's a high, high, high priority.
Seems like a big headache for not a lot of gain. Not only having the campground, but even figuring out how to write those regulations.
There's a lot of.
I would imagine that the value of real estate in this area is going to preclude a lot of development of campgrounds in Plymouth.
Sue, would you mind running the meeting for a minute while I step out for a second?
Sure.
Excellent, I'm gonna stop asking about going to one fifty five E, I'll be right back.
It looks like we've got quite a list, how about everybody take this list and come back at the next one and we can kind of hone it down, because there's a lot on that.
Can we email the list so that those of us who haven't been writing will have a copy of it, it'll be, it'll be in the minutes.
I have a li- I have it here, I can hook up with you. Then at least we've got something that's a little more.
Did I, did I miss the discussion of right to know, just topics for the board?
I just, I just messing around.
Okay, how about the next thing is RSA one fifty five E.
Do we want to, we want to wait for Matt to come back on that?
He'll catch up.
Okay, I can introduce it, so um generally, this doesn't come up very much, but in in my new role as select board, we're supposed to. Sign off on on gravel permit ex- uh gravel permits where the they assess, I think it's basically to assess the gravel tax, right? On on the excavated amounts, so like there there's a, there's a timber tax, there's a stumpage fee, there's.
An intent to excavate is what it's called, and then you get, that's, you have to report that.
But generally, in order for there to be an ex- intent to excavate, there should be a. A compliance with one fifty five E prior to that.
If it's less than a thousand.
So.
Less than a thousand feet, they don't have to.
Is that, okay, if it's less than a thousand yards?
Thousand, is it yards, Neil?
Yeah, cubic yards.
I was gonna say cubic yards, yeah.
Cubic yards.
Maybe square feet.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards.
Yards are cubic yards?
In the earth excavation.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
When people say it's a yard, it's a cubic yard.
I understand, I saw mulch.
Okay, yeah, same, same, same.
So anyway, go ahead, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, so my 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 question is, are are we, as it turns out, there aren't that many active pits. There's really one active pit in town and the permit just got renewed and. My question at the time was, was there financial secure surety associated with that plan and I'm not sure if there is. You know, um. Generally, the financial surety is is required for, uh if if the owner of the pit were to abandon it and not close it as a. As so when you file a plan, you're supposed to have, this is where we're gonna excavate, this is how we're gonna close it. If we don't close it, here's our bond to say that so that somebody else can close it on our dime. There are some other things in one fifty five E that allow the town to better inventory manage existing pits. Because there are, um, so if if you look at one fifty five E, there there, the first thing it does is after the definitions is it lists some exceptions. So it basically says, a permit is required for all excavations except for these four situations, existing excavations. Abandoned excavations, stationary manufacturing and quarrying, I think, oh, highway excavations. So, but then there are also some situations where if you have.
What is stationary manufacturing?
Uh, like a crusher. Like there, I think when we talked about this before, like there's a stationary manufacturing plant very close to the the rest area and hooks it.
Okay.
Where they've got like a permanent crusher set up. Like that's a stationary.
Gravel.
Yeah, there's a, there's a stationary manufacturing, like where they basically got permanent equipment that you've dumped.
Got it.
Big rocks in and spits out small rocks.
They use a lot more portables now.
Think of the Flintstones, but now.
So I guess one of my questions is. And maybe this is something that um we have to refer to planning staff is, have we gone through, has has the town assessed? The existence of existing pits and have landowners been notified in writing? And to to seek to ascertain if those pits are still in operation or if they're closed or if they're abandoned, what the story is. Um, because that that is required under, or would the town has the ability to do that? To determine if these are abandoned excavations.
Do we have like a easy record of that, like of?
Or I guess.
The one, so the one.
So if there's an active excavation, we're supposed to have an open pit. Right, abandoned or active or still in use?
I say abandoned.
Right.
Numerous pits in Plymouth.
So abandoned is one thing.
Yeah, people that owned them are probably dead, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it goes.
There are many, many small burrow pits too.
Right, I I it's almost any farm that ever.
Every farm had a pit.
Pit somewhere, right?
Every farm.
They probably all had a small dump too. But that's just kind of the history.
Yeah, bottle dumps are big.
Right. Um, so so one of the things that that can be done is if it hasn't been done is is that um. The exemption for local zoning or site location regulations, subparagraph A shall include quarrying or crushing of bedrock for the production. Oh, sorry, that's not the right one. Anyway. It's more of a question, does this board want, do we want to better define, so one fifty five is kind of general. Do we need to adopt something more specific or since we have such little interest, I mean, there there's probably gravel in town that's commercially available. And we might see applications in the future, if we move forward as is, we just rely on one fifty five E as it's written. If we more clearly define. In in zoning what we do, then we get to define, you know, what what's a commercially available amount, so if somebody has a historical pit. Um, or, you know, have they, you can say, hey, I've I've been taking a commercially viable amount of this continuously. And it's still in operation as as a. Um, as an existing excavation and if it's not an existing excavation and they want to start taking gravel out of it, then they have to file a new permit. So.
Personally, I'd like to know a little bit more before I make a decision.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's why the reason.
It's a good discussion.
Let's put it on the list of of.
I definitely think it's a good idea, I'm not, I'm not big on regulations because this, um, the alteration of terrain, terrain plane, which has to be.
Which is a state permit.
It, so the one fifty five E requires the AOT if they're gonna do a hundred thousand. Square yards or or more, so that alteration of terrain plan.
Isn't alteration of terrain also based on acreage, like if it's an acre or over?
No.
Nope.
Whether or not they're taking.
That's EPA.
Okay.
So this, you have to also have a reclamation plan, which is designed by an engineer. The only thing they do not require is whether or not the town requests a bond. This is where I think sometimes your regulations come in handy at the planning or at the town level, is the town can say, if you're gonna do it, we require a bond, a reclamation bond. And you you need to keep that in place every year, we need to get the renewal every year until you close it out. As far as the plan goes, that has to be submitted and every six years you have to redo your AOT. And if you're gonna expand it, you have to show that on the plan. No, but when I, but but that take, that that really does cover the town for a lot of the, they look at the water, they. There's things you can put in.
Also incremental reclamation, so if you're done excavating in one area, you're supposed to close it even if you're still working over here.
And that's what is part of that AOT as well, so and it also, it's fifty thousand. Square feet if it's within the shoreline protection that you need to do an alteration of terrain.
So it's much lower if you're.
It is, and this all has to be engineered and this all has to be approved by the state.
Yeah, all of these plans, I mean, any permit requires engineers to to stamp and provide grading and seating and all that stuff.
What I would say.
Engineers and I've worked on a number of alteration of terrain permits and reclamation plans.
I I guess the question is, you know.
And it's required.
It's, I mean, if if you're already doing the alteration of terrain permit, permit, there's very little extra that's required to submit. A a permit to the town under the same. Um, but it 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 does, I mean, my concern is that there's potential financial liability for the town if someone walks away from a pit in an unclosed state.
So having a bond.
And that's why I say I think it's important we address it and come up with some because you can require a bond, you can say, you know, and you can also protect neighbors. Um, you can say you can't, you you're not allowed to do anything before seven o'clock in the morning or, you know, I I'm not saying regulate it to death, I don't agree with that. But you definitely have to think of neighbors and, you know, look at it and and it protects the blaster as well, there's water quality involved. Um, we have to test wells within a thousand feet of us, so, you know, there's a lot of things that you can do. Um, and a lot of towns have some great regulations, there's not a lot, but it's protecting landowners next to you, it's protecting you as well, there's no questions.
So can I ask, those things that you just mentioned about testing water? And the bond, those two, those are not baked into the state RSA, correct?
No.
Okay.
They're not one fifty five E.
So we could add those into our town regulations as a bit more protection on top of the RSA.
And that's what I'm saying, I think that if you're going to do any regulations, I think, you know, just try to look at the big. And that's what I'm saying. I think that if you're going to do any regulations, I think, you know, just try to look at the big picture and protecting neighbors if they're gonna be close.
But if, but without anything more specific than 155E, we're, we're left there. And there are, there's, there's a, there are some issues that can be clarified.
I have a question.
Correct.
So this is an industrial use. Um, one, is that correct? Yes?
So it's actually a little bit nuanced. So 155E, and correct me if I'm wrong, says that if it's not directly addressed in your local zoning ordinance, a commercial earth excavation shall be treated as a special exception. So the, the pit behind the storage unit on, on Route three south that we may all be familiar with, the, the, the process there was the, the bare bones, the bare minimum of 155E, getting a special exception. And then in the absence of anything else, the planning board serves as the regulator, the planning board approved their plan. The planning board, to my knowledge, did not require a, a reclamation bond of any sort. And I, I'm not aware of them requiring any of these additional well protection things. They just, but they did basically do the, the bare bones of 155.
So I, I guess I was asking not because of what the process is. But I was just wondering if a lot of the things we're talking about, like mandating a bond and, and some of the protections for neighbors really apply to, or should apply perhaps even to like any heavy industrial use. And we do have other industrial uses. And I wonder, a lot of them run risks of contaminations and all sorts of things. And I wonder if some of these same rules that might go here for like a gravel pit or something, might also apply to other industrial uses where we'd want to have them bonded and certain precautions in place for neighbors. And I don't think it would, I don't know that would necessarily apply to all industrial use. I know it's a pretty broad category. But it just crosses my mind that it, it's, these same things we're talking about do apply probably or should maybe to a lot of industrial uses.
Potentially.
Part of, I think, I know what, I know when, when the town I used to live in did this, there was a lot of work that went into documenting existing excavations. And, and there's a section under existing excavations D that says, the owners or operators of existing excavation areas for which no permit has been obtained under this chapter shall file a report with a local regulator within one year after receiving a written notice of this requirement. So if this town has never written to landowners and said, if you have an existing excavation, you must notify us, then we should. And if, if we've already done it, we should already have a list of these existing excavations, but-
And if we write that and they weren't permitted, they should notify us within a year?
So they, if, if, yeah, basically they're required to say, yes, I have an existing excavation. There's, there's a list of criteria they have to comply with to say, yes, I, I have this existing excavation. I've been operating it. But there are also some definitions there about, I, I think you can get in, there's another section about the town can deem a pit abandoned if a commercially viable amount of gravel has not been taken out over a certain period of time. So if it's, if you, if you can say that, hey, this pit, you know, I haven't used, I haven't taken anything out in five years, then the town can say that, that pit is officially abandoned. If you're gonna take more out of it, it can, it either has to be incidental to construction or it has to be, or you have to file a permit.
Go through the vetting process.
Commercially viable amount.
So that is one of those, that is one of those things that has, that should be defined in the town ordinance is, is what is the threshold for permitting?
Do you currently have any intents out for this town, intents to excavate? Do you get anything? They have to file those with you and then they file it with DES.
Yeah, so I, I don't know all of the, all of those details. The ones that go through for the, the assessing purposes, I, I don't know. But the one that we do get the annual reports from is the, the pit on, on Route three south.
Right.
They do, I think their AOT is up for renewal soon or, or maybe it recently-
Usually about every six years they get a pretty good one.
I think one of the things that I know we talked about on the last board was that, you know, there's, there's, you can set a term for the permit. And we were talking about like a four-year term and we got feedback that said, hey, the AOT is due every six years. So either make it three or six. So that they don't have to do it on off years. And like, that's easy to do. Like you, you can easily make your permit requirements line up with the AOT requirement so that they're, they're not doing permitting on, we have to do it four year for the town, six years for this, and then another two years for the town. We're, we're getting into too many details.
Well, and the other thing to think about too is blasting.
And it seems like a good discussion to continue.
Yeah.
You know, I've had a permit for years and I'm not sure I'm gonna renew it because I'm grandfathered.
Well, you don't have to do the 155E.
Not really.
But you have to do an AOT if you're gonna do-
No, I don't.
So you've, you've got an existing excavation that you've been using?
Fifty years.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, see, we don't have to do the 155E either because we're grandfathered.
So, I mean, if you've got-
That's an old pit you have.
Yeah.
I know. But we have to do, of course, the AOT and we have to do this, the other state report.
Okay.
I remember Stanley Jackson owned that pit.
Yes, he did.
So we'll look into 155 as part of the thing.
Something to consider.
Yep.
The 10th priority.
The 10th priority.
Does the board want to do like a round robin and just highlight, you know, what the, the couple of pri- I can go back through my notes, of course, and share that with the board and, and share high level. But if everybody who had recommendations that they wanted to add to the, the list, as it were, people just, if you can remember them, obviously, you know, this isn't gonna take the place of the minutes, but just so we can kind of-
Are there 10, are there 10 candidates? Is that what's going on?
There's one, two, three, four.
Have you kept, kept track?
I've been keeping track. I have-
There's 10 plus the state ones.
Should I corroborate?
So here's a, here's a proposal to prioritize things. Why don't we put them in a list and everybody score them one to 10 or one to 11 or whatever it is. And whatever has the lowest score is the first thing we do.
Sure.
Whatever has the lowest score, oh, cause that, cause number one is-
Yeah, is your top priority.
Yeah.
I, part, part of me says sometimes some of these are longer discussions and some of these are kind of one-offs. And some of these have to wait like the RSAs until they actually get passed or not.
That can be a little, that can be an as needed though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have to think of the number of things we want to take to the-
Take on.
Towns.
Yeah.
To the voters.
Oh, right.
I mean, a page after page of that stuff, it's-
Hours of videos to me.
Molly's gonna make great videos again.
Yeah, she's ready to go.
You know, it, it, may, maybe the, the wetlands ordinance, maybe we wait until we have the NRI and, 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 you know, maybe it's easy to say, yes, this is a, this is a priority, but why don't we wait until we have the NRI and the discussion about the environmentally sensitive zone and that might be a good package later.
Yep. I think we should focus on commercial uses in the ag zone because-
Yep, I agree.
We discussed, we're putting that zone, we were putting that forward to voting before it was petitioned. You know, we're getting this through. We'll work on it after that.
I like the home business question. I think it's interesting.
That might be one way to achieve the same, the desired outcome for everyone.
Two, two previous zoning amendments that didn't go through.
Yep.
Tenny Mountain overlay.
Two overlays.
Yeah.
So did you just, did we talk about the, the E S Z, the environment?
That's gonna wait until-
That's gonna wait because of the NRI.
I think that'll wait.
NRI.
So we have three right now, the two overlays.
Yep.
Commercial uses and ag.
I think that master plan budgeting RFP stuff.
That's a pretty low lift though.
Is it?
I think, well, I mean, the RFP, I mean-
Just a men-
We're out a bit on that.
Amendments.
As long as we create a timeline, a schedule for it and like even if it's starting next year, just creating a budget in this year so that we can start on it next year. Although we don't, I mean, we know how busy it gets with hearings, you know, November, December. It'd be nice if, if we're gonna do that, let's try and get it done by October.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Do we want it circa 155E as, as, to look at it further and see if there are some more protections the town should be putting in place?
I mean, it may, it may be as easy as looking at another town's adoption into their ordinance and say, does this work for us? And if it does, let's-
Might be a meeting or two and get it, all right, yeah, let's have that on there.
I kind of think it's important because I kind of see a couple coming down the road. And I think it's important because they're in pretty tight neighborhoods.
All right, let's, yeah.
I could see that.
Non-including legislation and stuff, that's four, right?
And I do have, I do have quite a few different copies of zoning regulations from other towns.
I'm, I'm glad you're up to date on, you're very familiar with the story.
It's my life.
Yeah. What about the wetlands?
We're waiting.
I think that, I think that should wait with the NRI and the E S Z.
So that's E S E and wetlands are kind of one. Short-term rentals?
I think we should, I don't know, I'm not sure we should put anything forward this year. I think we should study it as part of the housing.
Housing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that will fall into that.
So there were a lot of them.
I, I wouldn't put that through this year. We got more feedback first.
So we have four, as you said, Matt.
I think that, sorry, I think that will keep us-
The special exception criteria.
That, I kind of couched that in the kind of ag zone question.
Ag zone, okay, good.
So I have ag zone question, TMOD, Tenny Mountain overlay district, Fairgrounds Road overlay district, and the RSA 155E. Does that sound bad?
We're missing anything.
And is Campgrounds gonna go in with a, we're not doing that?
I don't, it doesn't, I don't remember Campgrounds being this very big.
Okay, so that's pretty good.
I think if we start working on those and set that out to the public as these are right now, and ever-changing, this is-
For sure.
You know, these are our priorities, what we plan to focus on for 2025.
Yeah.
But also make it be known that these aren't the four things we work on. We'll have other legislative stuff, you know, that this will be evolving. But if everyone out there knows, hey, these are sort of the four things we're focusing on in addition to everything that's coming in at us, that'll be a good start.
Yeah.
And if we have a change, you know, month or two down the road?
Oh.
Where we have to shift, perfect.
Can I ask about something?
Please.
This didn't happen last year, although they've always hounded us for it. A meeting with the-
Zoning board.
Zoning board?
Zoning board.
Oh, that'd be fun.
Should meet with conservation too. Well, what, yeah, what about a meeting with conservation, as Neil suggested?
And, and so was that, yeah.
So conservation, meeting with conservation, meeting with-
They were eager to meet with those.
They, they might be happy to know we're considering a, a wetlands ordinance and-
And the E S E.
Yeah.
What would we talk about with the zoning board? I'm not trying to be a-
I, I, I spoke individually with the Conservation Commission, with Joan Turley.
Uh-huh.
And there was some talk about potentially having a meeting together. And so-
What about the zoning board?
I have not spoken to them in a while. And who's their chair now?
It's still David Ken.
Oh, it is David Ken.
And he hasn't-
I thought, I thought he, no?
Nope, he's still, he's still chair. And he has not asked for a meeting this year, but they do often ask at some point in the year for a joint meeting and sometimes it happens.
We gave him a big present this past year, all these like new special touches.
So the, the, often the zoning board, planning board joint meeting is kind of focused on, are there any, in the past, questions that have been asked are, in the zoning board's experience dealing with variances, special exceptions, are there areas that they're giving a lot of variances or denying a lot of variances that might require new zoning work? Are there special exceptions that are difficult for them, that they want extra criteria on, or that they think, things they think should be removed, added, changed? It's, it's in the past been framed as a, how is the zoning ordinance working for the zoning board? I will say they, they have not been incredibly busy the last couple of years, but-
I would, I would say, given that we just threw a whole bunch of new special exceptions at them, it might be good to get their feedback on what they think about that process-
Yeah.
From their point of view, even though they probably haven't seen any of them yet, but at least knowing that they're there.
Yeah.
That might be a good reason to touch base.
Yeah.
I agree.
Agreed.
And if there are more criteria they want, criteria than they want, maybe that, they could talk to us about that.
Let's try to put a meeting together. Like a board and a committee.
Is there any, so does this tip, in, in the past, I, I don't remember. I think last time the zoning board came to a planning board meeting, they meet less frequently. So often they're pretty open to meeting at a planning board work session. Is there anything that the board would not like, any days that the board would really not like that to happen for work sessions? Or if I put a invitation to them to come to a work session over the summer, would, would any day work for the planning board?
Might have to tell Judy.
Mm-hmm.
Do you mind bouncing that off Judy?
Yeah.
I think for us here, we're pretty flexible.
Yeah.
Yep, I am.
Yeah, we default to Judy's schedule, I think, we'll move, yeah.
And then I, the Conservation Commission, I don't know their schedule as well.
Well, did you have a comment you were gonna say?
Yeah, I did. Here, here's the thing. If, if anybody's gonna look into RSA 155, the interesting thing is under abandoned excavations, it says, an earth excavation shall be deemed abandoned if no, no earth material of sufficient weight or volume, so there's something that needs to be defined, has been commercially useful, has been removed from that excavation during any two-year period.
Wow.
Any two-year period?
Yes.
So it could be active for the past five years, but-
If, if it was, if it was not active seven-
It sits for two years.
Six and seven, it was dead.
The town should deem it abandoned and it should be subject to permit.
Wow.
Holy smokes.
Yes. So, so it's really only for, it is only for, it is only for, I mean, proving that is another thing, but like-
Or do you enforce it, but, yeah.
Right. But the town, it's, it's under abandoned excavations. Let me, let me scroll up to get to the section of man-
Neil, is yours abandoned or are you still using it?
I use it. Yeah, I just don't do a lot.
155E two permit required two.
Two?
What do you take out of there?
Abandoned excavations.
Just sand?
Yeah. I scream long.
It's two A.
Two A.
Two A one.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
So, I mean, this, this, the whole goal of 155E really is to say, hey, yeah, if, if you have a pit that's been continuously operating, you can continue. But it's really trying to get everybody to file a permit, like, and say, you know, come in under the new rules and say that this is, these are the permit requirements, show us how you're gonna reclaim it, provide a bond.
There's a thing about reclamation where there's incentive. If, if you reclaim an abandoned pit, your tax assessment goes way down.
Oh, interesting.
So there's a lot of incentive there.
So it just becomes, it can be commercial use or, or current use.
The town can tax you at the highest commercial rate if they want, if your pit's open.
Right.
You know, if they really want to stick it to you.
Need some money.
Yeah, you know?
But if you, if, if you have, if you have thirty acres and the rest of it's in current use, it can, that part of the closed pit can go back into current use, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and then you don't pay a dollar a year or whatever.
And a lot of people turn them into subdivisions or industrial parks or whatever.
Yeah, I know of a number of pits that, that, well-
That's the other thing is, is you, a permit's required unless you're taking land that's incidental to the construction of a house. So that's something-
Or agricultural.
Cause like, just because you're gonna put a house in the middle of your pit at the end doesn't mean it's gonna, it's incidental.
It's not a workaround.
Right, no.
But I will say, people do manipulate that.
And I've got a, a clay pit and a brick kiln on my property.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
Yeah. And we've been, we had a gravel pit over by the airport. My great-grandmother's sister gave huge track of land to the town for the airport. But somehow we managed to keep using that gravel pit. I don't know.
Oh, gee.
But, anybody was looking, you know, it's out there in the west Plymouth.
Moving right along.
Yeah. How's the well going over there?
It's, you know, the police use it now as a firing range.
Yes, that's right down there. Moving on. Is everyone comfortable with what we've discussed so far? We can move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yes, please do.
Unfinished and other business, a discussion of the housing champions designation program.
Can we table this? Potentially? I don't know.
How does everyone feel about that?
I've been going over sixteen hours now.
And far, as far as Taylor, I, I am not opposed to that. If we do want to apply for being a housing champion, I'm not even saying we should. Is there a deadline?
The deadline is May 31st.
Oh.
There is a deadline.
One more meeting.
There is another meeting in between now and then, if the board wanted to.
Can I quickly say one thing?
We're eligible?
That we can think about if we do want to go forward, two things, if we do want to go forward. We're kind of borderline for eligibility. Although we have had a lot of good relationships and press about housing in Plymouth with the housing, with HOP. The other thing I wanted to say is, I believe Joseph, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is a three-year designation?
Correct.
As a three-year designation, do we have the capacity and understanding of what we could potentially use as infrastructural funding for at this moment? Or with the assumption that this might still exist in the future as a designation, would it actually be better to actually wait until we're better qualified to apply for it and better qualified to use any funding that comes with it?
Yeah.
Especially since funding's kind of a shitshow right now anyway.
Yeah.
Can I say that?
Make sure you get that in the meeting.
Word for word.
So, two answers to that question, yes and maybe. So there's two funding pool, pools of funding tied to the, to the program.
I didn't say there was none, but it's kind of a mess.
Well, yes, and, and those are limited, and the question of whether they will be replenished, it's, it's not so likely that they'll be replenished. But even if they are just the pools that exist today, one of them is the infrastructure grant program, which, if you can tie an infrastructure project to housing, as a housing champion, you're eligible for this new pool of infrastructure funding.
Is that like if we needed to add to our water and sewer capacity?
Exactly, water and sewer, could be sidewalks, it could be something else, but it, it really is some kind of infrastructure, there is a bit of a match. The other grant is the per-unit grant program, which, if the town permits certain types of housing, the town basically gets a check for each of those units that it permits. Now, I think it might be only de-restricted housing, but the town would basically, if you approved a ten-unit de-restricted housing project, you get ten thousand dollars per unit, whatever the number is. So that one, I mean, if you think we're going to get something over the next three years-
I would like to apply for this specifically to benefit the Habitat project. They're, they're looking at infrastructure costs for a road, and I think that, that would be a great project.
I haven't heard much from Franklin.
I, I think we should still apply.
Yeah, okay.
If we get a grant, they'll use it. Is there support on that?
I, I think so.
So we, the thing is, we haven't had a conceptual from them on this, I, this is just word of mouth. Like, I, I know what they're-
It was about a year ago, nine months ago? No, they had a-
Up behind Spear.
They had a meeting.
No.
The B C C got a conceptual.
Off Tenny Mountain Highway.
They convened a meeting just to kind of explore some of the issues with a bunch of stakeholders and-
Oh, right, right, on, on Tenny, out on Boulder Point, yeah.
It's, it's the lot behind O'Reilly Auto and, and their store.
Oh, interesting.
But it, but it goes all the way up.
Goes up behind Spear Healthcare, that's where the roads are gonna go.
It's all the way down to Tenny Mountain Highway.
Wow.
It's a big lot.
Wow.
I've been all over that lot, it's kinda wet.
I have no, I have no reason to not agree with you, Phil, so.
I, I, I think it would make a great reason to, I, I've been trying to think, rack my brain about ways to, that the town could help a project like that out. And I think, I think what they're, from what I understand, their, their plan is to have it be mixed use. So some of it is gonna be hu- habitat housing, they're also planning to sell some house, some lots for market rate housing, so that it's not-
That's what you mean by mixed use, they are talking about that.
Yeah.
Not, not mixed, not mixed use in terms of like commercial-
Commercial, but, but mixed income housing.
To generate funding for the road.
Joseph, does that property about that, is that view, that, over that subdivision over on Reservoir Road?
Claybrook.
There's another lot in, so there's a big lot at the end of Claybrook, and there's this other lot, and they sort of touch in the middle, but neither lot extends all the way to the road frontage of the others, so it-
At least they could, cause isn't there an extension of the road for, for a subdivision, isn't that potentially going through? So if they could go to the end of it, they could maybe someday touch?
It's a possibility, and that's a good, it, it certainly ties into another thing that the board may wanna think about as a part of one of the RSA changes, which is this question of road connectivity. If the town's rules that we have today on limiting the length of a dead-end street were to no longer be feasible, are there other ways to promote connections between streets, to encourage good street design and subdivisions that's safe and more efficient and potentially reduces congestion, without just saying you can't have a cul-de-sac more than a thousand feet long? There might be a creative solution there that, that could be looked at. But, yeah, and one of the, one of the questions about the habitat development that was brought to the housing committee was the question of the town financing the cost of the road.
Right, the road, that's right, too.
It'd be a big lift for the town.
So this would be a-
At the time, the response from the town was that it was not feasible, um, to, because the, the estimate was about four and a half million at the time. So again, you know, I, I don't really have an update on the project.
There's grant funding that's based, if it's like ten thousand dollars per unit, and they're putting in a bunch of units, that's-
Like they are de-restricted.
And that one's an after the fact, right, so that, that ten thousand per unit, once you've permitted that unit, you get the funding. So it, it, I think it's pretty flexible what that could be used for, but-
So, maybe we should try to apply for it.
I mean, if you bring more money into the town, that's not a bad thing.
If it reduces congestion on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Yeah, it's huge.
We were thinking about building a road behind, well, behind Harris Furniture, going up behind the Ford Garage and trying to join up there to get traffic off of Tenny Mountain Highway. And I don't know, Bill Bolton had an idea for funding.
Really?
Yeah, I just can't remember.
Is he still working on it?
No, I don't think so.
So this might help.
Well, I didn't know if maybe he's still working on funding.
He probably has more information.
Well, the funding of the rodent and the funding of the puppee.
Almost done. Jabble it, Matt.
It would be important to do a return on investment for any large project like that, to make sure it's actually feasible.
Any other comments tonight relating to the business?
You know, I would like to say, despite this being a long meeting this evening, but a lot accomplished, I found these last several meetings very enjoyable, and, um-
It's a lot, it's a lot easier when you're not chairing them, isn't it?
I could think of other factors as well.
I, I've been a chair before, I wouldn't wanna be one.
I was also thinking about other factors, but, uh-
I like the fact that I don't have to have a report to the select board.